But I went with his recommendations.
I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Lancaster County Council. This is our budget workshop today on May the 8th, 2024. Like to welcome everyone here today. And would you please rise and join Councilmember Terry Graham as he alleges in our pledge of allegiance followed by the invocation?
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we give thanks for this opportunity to meet together as a council workshop to discuss the business of this county, especially the budget, which will have an impact on not only next year, but the years to come. We ask this in your name, amen.
Amen. Let's move on down to our approval of our agenda to have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion for Mr. Carr and second for Ms. McGriff. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval of our agenda. Let's move right into our discussion and action items today. The presentation of our administrators recommended budget for fiscal year 2025. Mr. Dennis Marstall and Ms. Sabrina Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and council members. Today is the big day that we want to present to you the FY25 budget requests. Working with me today will be a few of our key staff members. You'll note them wearing their green outfits today as we got our money green on today, so we're talking about that from the presenters today. But do want to highlight first a thanks to county council. Your workshops that we've gone through, the last three workshops, have helped inform as we put this budget together. Some of the conversations when we looked at capital operating and certainly personnel. Also want to thank the department directors and even community. We've got some community requests, but really department directors and there's some middles, the thought they put into it. And as you may have seen or you'll hear, we asked department directors to go back and take another look at their FY24 to see where we might be able to shave off a few things to carry into 25, given the large number of requests that we had. But for our presentation, we will have three folks helping me, which I'm pleased to introduce here in a second, or I'll highlight them now. Sabrina Harris is our CFO. We have Jamie Provuznak as our budget director and Stephanie Snowden as our deputy county administrator. Want to particularly highlight that none of these three were here last year during the budget process, but I want to really commend them for jumping into their roles, understand our budget process and getting a handle on how we are structured here. And they've assured me that they will be here next year as well. So they've had so much fun so far, they will be here next year. But we will go through different segments of the presentation that you have in your notebook that they'll walk me through. And I'll go through a few things. I'm going to highlight if we'll start on the first page and our page number should sync up. So I'm looking at page two of the budget presentation that's in your notebook. Clearly, as we start out thinking about what are the budget goals, aligned with the strategic plan, we made a significant investment in the strategic plan. And so we want to make sure that our budget supports that. We've got some checkpoints on that. Maintain our county's fiscal health, our bond rating, our taxation level. So we've got some check marks on that. Certainly look about competitive compensation benefits. Always the interest as we think about our workforce. And then again, continue to provide the needed technology and facilities to provide our service delivery for the citizens of Lancaster County. And then the last one I want to dwell on a little bit. We've talked about this from the beginning of the budget process and over the last three to five years about the impact of growth and the plan for the future. We're going to highlight here a few stats and data. When we see a 3.3% increase in our population just in FY23, then you look out over the last three years, we've had a 12% growth in population. That certainly does lead to enhanced service demands with a growing population, just serving more folks. And so we've really been trying to address. I think we've had great conversations on some policies, things we've been trying to do. But really at this point where I want to say in this budget, I really do think we have the opportunity this year to make some significant steps to not only catch up to growth, but now plan for some things. But as we do that, I will say over the years, the budget's gotten leaner and leaner and tighter and tighter. And so I think what you're going to see here today, this presentation, you're going to see some trend history. I know you've all been asked for trend history. You're also going to see some future projections. You're also going to see a 10-year plan for FIRE. I've heard you. So you will see some of this information. Certainly welcome more questions that we'll take down today and then bring back for our full meeting next Wednesday. But again, I think that this budget really, one thing's I'm pretty focused on about, how do we continue to not only keep up with, but try to get ahead of growth? And there are some key investments in this year's budget that I think will help us do that. So as we talk about the impact of growth, here again is the just the population information that shows that we're the fourth fastest growing county in South Carolina, but also we're the fastest growing county in the Charlotte metro area. So our growth rate is faster than Mecklenburg County, than Union County in North Carolina, York County. So that continues to take a big factor in everything we do. And then really over the 12% growth rate over the past three years. How this trickles down, how do we absorb that? Certainly got leaner, leaner, but it reflects itself in our 911 calls. Over the past five years, we've had a 12.5% increase in our 911 call for services. You can see the breakdown, FIRE, EMS, sheriff. But we're now to a point where we're taking 130,000 911 calls a year. We made significant investments last year in our 911 facility. Our pay increases last year to where I think you heard shouts of joy from our 911 director that he's fully staffed with no vacancies. The good work environment, the strong compensation has helped. And it came at the right time as we've seen this peak volume in 911 calls. Going forward, growth, housing is certainly driving a lot of that. We have on there the county auditor billed for 58,612 real properties compared to 50,000 just in 2020. And then again, the number of vehicles, we build for 110,500 compared to 82,000 back in 2020. So you do see some of that impact. And when you see that in particular, I want to link that there. We also got our residential development. We've got 14 started, three in grading phase, 12 are on the books still. But basically, we have 7,100 single-family homes that are pending. When you look at these growth numbers, the impact on the county is when you think about billing out for these number of properties, these number of vehicles, that's increased impact on the number of assessments our assessor's office doing. That's the increase in the number of tax bills our treasurer's sending out, our auditor's working on, our finance department is working on. So again, just, I think we've done a very good job in absorbing growth as we've had to change our service delivery models, think about technology. How do we accommodate this growth going forward? And some of the other growth, certainly building permits. This is one area where you actually see a decrease. So in 2024, as of May 1, we've gone down to 2,708. That also has a revenue impact on us. And we'll highlight revenue here in a little bit. But that is one area of growth where we had the peak and now we're going down a little bit. We're back to, if you look on there, we're back to 2015 levels, really about equal. So we'll see there is projections that our building permits will go up again. But again, the impact on our inspectors, even when you think about multifamily, we're getting more apartment complexes. Basically, a 210-unit apartment complex is still treated like 210 new houses. The complexities for our inspections and inspectors, we've brought in some outside help for our inspections on some of these projects. Then if you look internally, well, we still have our roads miles. That hasn't changed too much, but our fleet, we now have over 600 vehicles in our fleet with trailers, other small equipment mowers. And then we have 62 facilities that we're maintaining across the county. We had the new soccer complexes we've added. We're expanding the Indian land rec center for the annex for the groundbreaking we're having on May 22nd. But then we got about growth. We've made significant investments thanks to county council, particularly in technology. But just from 2016, we've gone from assets of 352,000 up to over 2.4 million when you consider all the body cameras, security cameras, networking equipment, computers, printers, monitors. So we've made some significant investments that have really helped us again, address a lot of this growth going forward. And so then again, even one marker for our citizens. We say population has certainly grown. It translates into voting. We have 78,579 new voters in the county who are registered. So again, the impact that puts on, you'll see in the budget, there is some recommendation to buy some new polling machine books and different things. And so all of this growth is cascaded into how our department directors have looked at their budget requests and how I've looked at budget requests going forward. So now I'll turn it over to Ms. Provuznak to talk about revenue and carries through some of our budget information.
Thank you, Mr. Marstall. Good afternoon, council members. The next series of slides, you will see revenue projections for the general fund and we'll discuss the assumptions that were made to get to the FY25 proposed budgets for the revenue line items in the general fund. This is an overview slide you have here. The FY24 adopted general fund revenue budget was 76.2 million. So based on, we know consumer price index for March of 2024 is 3.5% growth. We are projecting potential growth in this fund at a range of 2.6 million to 3.3 million. So you see a proposed budget there of 78.9 million. And that's based on, we're going to look at prior years. We're going to see what happened with collections. We're going to do year-over-year percent increase and then know and be cognizant of what's going on in the community. We're also assuming a 95% collection rate through the treasurer's office. We've done some work with the auditor and with the assessor and have determined what one mil would equal for 2024. And that's that number right there, the 518,035. And that's certified.
What's our present mil value?
No, this is what we are.
That would be 2025.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for that.
The new revenue projection, yeah, we just had a typo there. It is based on the revenue project for 2025. So that'd be for 518 for 25 numbers.
Thank you for that.
It was last year's roughly 488,000, I believe.
That is correct.
488,000 and a few dollars, yeah.
Great catch. Thank you for that. So now the next series of slides, you're going to see trend information over a 10-year period for the five largest revenue sources in the general fund. So you will see from FY19 to FY28 there in the data table. This is your ad valorem tax. This is your largest tax, this is your largest revenue source. So you will see that year-over-year, we assumed a 2% to 3% rate in growth, modest, conservative, and keeping the CPI in mind. And we are proposing for this particular fund, a $34.8 million budget. And then those out years, 26 through 28, are projections of what growth could be and what it would look like for ad valorem. That bottom note there is what we have collected through, from July through April. And that is the 33.7 in the ad valorem tax. And as you remember, this is your real and personal property excluding vehicles and your real property being residential, commercial, and of course, your personal property being watercraft and the like. We are assuming that 95% of the total levy will be collected by Ms. Helm's office. And so that's 2% growth there. Local option rollback, this is another, one of the larger revenue sources in your general fund. And the rhythm is the same here where we're looking back at FY19, excuse me, and what was collected in actuals for FY19 through FY23. And then that FY24 figure is the budget, what you adopted for FY24 and the proposal of 8.3 for FY25. And then a 2% to 3% increase in growth for those three out years. And that's your rollback. Your vehicle tax, Dennis alluded to this when he spoke earlier about growth. But you will see here that we have, you know, a modest increase in the trend line and same type of information where you have your actuals for FY19 through FY23 of what was collected on the vehicle tax. You have your FY24 adopted budget at 4.5 million there. And we're proposing based on 2%, 3% growth, a 4 million for FY25 and then making those same assumptions for the three out years for the vehicle tax. We also would know that this is probably, the vehicle tax is connected to road improvement fees as well. So you'll see when that slide comes up, how the two interact with each other. Building permits, this is probably, this is quite interesting because you can see over time, those first four years where we've had that growth that Mr. Marstall alluded to in our community. And then of course, the market is, it seems to be cooling. So we see in FY23, that dramatic decrease there at 3.2 million. And then we've sort of normalized, well, we've normalized the curve there by suggesting that your adopted budget is 3.9. And for FY25, we're proposing a 3.2 million and then having relatively flat growth in those out years, 2% to 3%. And this is for your building permits.
On the, back up on the vehicle tax. Year 24 was 4.53 and then in 25, it's going to go down to 4.0. Is that because people's keeping their cars longer, not buying as many new cars? Is that dropping?
That's, that's an excellent point. I'm not sure if that is what the consumer is thinking, but I do know that that number that for FY25 is just straight math where we are doing year-over-year percent change and what, what is happening in those FY19, FY23, and then based on what we've collected. And then there's the guess for FY25. So I'm not sure if the consumer's actually keeping their vehicle longer, but that's a good point to consider.
Could our auditor address that, please?
Sure.
He's in the audience on the back row.
Yeah, because that's a pretty significant number.
Yeah, well, because as the auditor's coming forward, I know Ms. Provuznak, when we were doing the revenue projection, you looked at what has been collected to date. And so that number is less than, what's been collected to date is less than what's been budgeted, correct?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, so I don't know, all our data that we look at, it is going up. It is not decreasing because of the impact of growth, especially in Indian land. I've said this before and I'll say it again. If you could give me a code enforcement officer that could enforce the out-of-state plates up in that area, it would be a big revenue boost for the vehicles.
Amen.
Yeah, I don't know why there's a drop. I mean, it could have something to do with the collection rate or something in the collections, but I'm, we've always seen a growth from year to year.
Yeah, I mean, I think we might ought to revisit that, how that was calculated. Not you, the budget staff that came up with that number.
These were modest projections.
Is that year-to-date or is that the year number? Is that what the issue is?
Yeah, the issue is right now, when she looked at what's collected through May 1 or the end of April, we are not necessarily seeing that we're at the 4.5, but we still have a month, we still have two months.
Yeah, so, okay, so it's a year-to-date number, not a year-to-year.
But there was a projection, there's a projection.
They had the projection in two more months.
There's a projection in there. So we think we'll meet the revenue, but the concern is maybe barely, which is a surprise because we're talking about all this increase in growth, particularly on vehicles. And so we will continue to look at that. But when we did the revenue status collected to date, we're, we're not gangbusters compared to the budget projection or compared to the budgeted amount.
But I just wondered if the last two months would be greater than your average month? Has anybody looked at that?
Yes, we actually have that data for May and June from 2023. And so we, we could provide that to you as well.
But when you factor that, I think we had a swing of some days a thousand dollars came in and some day a 7,000 came in and.
Quite a variety of how much comes in on a daily basis.
I would just think you'd look at monthly totals.
We do, and she did, she has that. But we'll, we'll keep monitoring that. Certainly give another update for you and give some more detail next Wednesday. Any other questions? We'll move on to 40, or page 16, ambulance, do you want to do that?
There's a trend here from FY19 to FY28. And this is again, what has been collected from 19 through 23 that's on the books for ambulance charges. And you see the spike. And then again, we project very modest growth, 2% to 3% year-over-year for those out years. And then you have a budget here, adopted budget FY24 at 2.8. And then we have proposed 3.2 based on prior year collections and growth. And that's how you're getting those out years. And this is for ambulance charges.
For 20 for this year, we've had a significant drop. Is that because we're not getting collections in as much?
The year's not complete.
Good point, Billy.
We'll have, well, there's a few things in there about even how number of staff members we have to be aggressive to collect. Is part of that where we have been down some staffing in there? So that has a factor.
But we keep talking about increased calls, but yet the revenue's gone down. So there's something wrong somewhere.
It's not year-to-date, it's projected for the year, right?
Yeah, right.
Again, we'll, we'll keep digging on this, but we want to show you that these are key drivers, and so we'll keep digging on it.
Register of deeds, here we are again. You've got actuals from FY19 to FY23. This is what came in the door. FY24 is your budget. FY25 is what is proposed based on year-over-year actuals. And this is then, you know, thinking in 2% to 3% growth, that you've got a budget for 1.6 and then very modest growth out for '27 through '28. Register of deeds.
Can I ask a question on that one? So if permits are significantly going down, is that not going to impact the register of deeds and the number of deeds that are going to be recorded?
It will on some of that, but this is also is very economic driven, but number of house sales. And so when the market and the mortgage rates have gone up, the number of transactions are going down. But yes, it is a link to new home sales and things as well.
Yeah, because if we're looking at FY24, the budget, I imagine, was the million dollars.
Yes, that is correct.
But then we're jumping up nearly 657,000 for the following year.
And that's an average.
When permits have gone down. Like that just doesn't make sense to me.
That's an average of year-over-year from prior years.
But, but interest rates drive the home sales. And if home sales are dropping, you just can't average the prior years where interest rates were lower. You have to factor that in.
Especially when your building permits are going down. I mean, that's.
That's telling you the trends.
Just, I just don't, I don't see this averaging prior years. I mean, I know that's important, but I think the reality is that building permits are dying and they're not likely to go back up either, in my opinion.
And there are a couple of the drivers in there, but you're right, we can continue to refine this. But when you see some of the developments off of Harrisburg Road, that they are actually coming online. And so thinking, we're trying to put for y'all, as we do our revenue projections, from when grading permit comes in, when does that equal actually getting a property on the tax roll and different timelines like that? But knowing there will be some decent-sized developments that actually will be coming online in this fiscal year or, yeah, coming online this fiscal year, that will help drive that too.
Yeah, but they actually got to build them. I mean, just.
I'm with you, the timing, we'll work on that some more.
Yeah, the permits is a whole nother issue besides, you know, that's when permits are pulled and permit fees are dropping. But even real estate transactions, I don't have any statistics on top of my head, but they've got to be dropping too with the mortgage rates holding and Fed not lowering rates this year as they said they would. And just need, need some sort of tweaking there.
Road improvement fees. Here you see the same time period looked at, FY19 to FY23. The trend line's going up, those are actual collections. Your FY24 budget is listed there. And then the proposed budget for FY25 and a projection for the out years.
I don't, I don't understand that one. That's based on the number of vehicles.
And it's a flat rate, it's not based on value, it's a flat rate per vehicle.
We'll do some research on that before next week. Because that's not based on depreciation or anything.
Right.
This is your proposed fee changes. You have a document in the back of your book, supplemental information that will list the proposed fee schedule for the upcoming year. The next series of slides are going to give you what the fee is and if there's a change to it. The entire fee schedule has your, any text changes. And then it also has deletions. But here, what we've noted is just. But here, what we've noted is just what would be new and what would be, what's changing. So you've got your fee, you've got the department, you've got what the current fee would be. If there's no fee listed, that means that's a new fee that is proposed for FY '25.
Can I ask a question on the rezonings? So why are we lowering the rezoning application fees?
Uh, we'd have to come back and ask Alison Harden.
Okay. We'll take a list of questions and we'll bring that back to you.
Yeah, because then when we go to the leagues, those fees are increasing significantly, but for, like I said, the rezoning applications, which is primarily looks for the greater-than-10 acres, is significantly reduced, which I would imagine a rezoning application for greater-than-10 acres is our developers. So it looks like we're charging our residents more, but then charging developers less. Is that what we're doing?
Uh, we would have to go back and follow up with our, with Alison Harden.
Okay.
And just off the top of my head, 20, the rezoning out for less than one acre, would it not be better to be, uh, one acre or less? Because a lot of people do seize on, I'll, I'll deed you an acre.
Yeah, I'm, that's why I was, because it really, you're covering, it's really going to become anything one acre or greater is now 435.
Yeah, I'm saying though, Jose, just a slight tweak, less than one acre means 0.99 of an acre. I'm just saying, one acre or less would be the first category. The next one would be greater than one would be, I think would be more apropos.
I'm-
You okay with that?
Point 01, I don't think is gonna-
Well, I'm saying about, just, just the fact that if, if I'm subdividing, you know, I'd have to think about that as, as old grandpa or something going, I would just give my grandson an acre. If I'd done 0.99 was the number, I would have done 0.99.
You're concerned with the changes in the sale?
Yeah, it's more- And I'm concerned about grandpa, Ms. McGriff.
These are the remaining planning and zoning suggested fees, these are new, and then followed by probate court. New fees. New fees for parks and rec. These latter adults are based on teams, that's why you see that large uptick instead of individuals.
So I'm sorry, so that explains those athletic fees? The current fees that we're looking at are individuals?
That's correct.
And then the proposed fee is per team?
That's correct.
That would be a good distinction to have. Because then that's going to, that's going to be a reduction, it's not an increase. Okay, that-
Then how many is on the team?
It's true, but-
Uh, continuing on-
About on the park and rec after-school registration, $20, oh, this is on page 23, Ms. McGriff, about the one, two, I'm, in my head, I'm sorry. I'm always ahead, overachiever.
I don't think so.
She's on it now, then.
Okay, you're on it now.
Are we on recreation now?
It's, this slide's slowing, showing, so-
Okay, so my concern is after-school registration going from $20 to 150, and then another one's $12 to 140. Is there something there that doesn't meet the eye? I mean, why would we be going up that much? One sounds low, the current, the other one sounds high, so I-
Chris is in here, maybe he can answer.
We'll ask our Parks and Recreation Director to come forward, Mr. Chris Clouden.
I've got a couple of concerns. Hi, everybody. So instead of doing a per-day charge and having our staff act like accountants, we decided to do a per-week fee to make it a little bit easier to track finances and not have people fall terribly far behind, which we have had happen quite a bit over the last few years.
So the difference is a per-day to per-week, so $20 per day on the after-school to 150 for the week now.
So you're going up from 100 to 150? Where the $20 current fee to the week fee?
150 is a month, sorry. I had per-week in my head for summer camp.
A month.
Either way, we were trying to get away from daily collections.
Okay.
Then that's a reduction, the per-day fee.
And it includes, so it includes, we, we used to nickel-and-dime people for field trips as extras and this and that, so we're trying to, we tried to create one whole number that makes it easier for people to collect, for us to collect the fees and just for people to pay every week.
It was a constant-
Won't be any additional fees to collect.
The only thing that would be additional is if it's a late fee, if somebody's late picking up their child.
And that's, that's another question about the late pickup. Uh, $10 for first 10 minutes and $5 for one minute after 10 minutes. It's, it's no, uh, do you have any leeway in there? They have to be picked up at what time?
Six o'clock.
And if they're 10 minutes late, it's $10.
In theory, we are able to assess them a $10 fee for being late for the pickup, yes.
You know, sometimes hours get held up.
Oh, I know. If you don't do that, they'll keep continuing.
They'll also take advantage of you.
They will take advantage of you.
It's a bit of a double-edged sword for us, yeah.
You should have a one time you're forgiven, second time you're not forgiven. It's, it's gotta be something in there, just not, because all parents can't afford every time, and it may be on purpose, but you miss five days a week late, that's extra $50.
If you miss five days a week late, that's a ha, that's a habit.
Yeah, that's a habit, but we gotta understand, some of these people don't make enough money to even if they're used to doing it. We gotta start slowly.
Well, I think this is in line with the school system and with any daycare in the county.
Don't believe it, that daycare is not-
It, it's a mechanism to allow us to-
My wife ran a daycare for years, and they charged a fee when you didn't get there at six o'clock.
Yeah. If you don't, they'll take advantage of you.
They have a waiver, they have a leeway of about 10 minutes, they do. I've had daycare myself, I've used it, but I'm just saying, that's going to be a problem.
There, there were frequent flyers that paid a lot.
If you don't do so, then it's going to be a problem.
I can understand a waiver for one time, you know. You know the next time you do this, you're going to be charged, and have some sort of way of documenting, and I'm sure you do, but, uh, we can't put too big a burden on these parents, y'all.
I, I mean, you, you take the adult out of the room and you start doing that. When you, when you sign that contract to let your kids come, and it says if you're late, you're going to pay 10, $10, then you know it's coming, it's not like it's a surprise.
So do you have any, like, if it's an emergency, are you excused?
I'm sure there's case-by-case basis that our staff are aware of different situations, somebody's stuck in traffic, somebody's late, there's an emergency, then-
Is it safe case, bad case, is that somewhere?
We, we don't have anything spelled out in writing, because we need to have the flexibility built in. We don't want to put something rigid in, in documentation like that. It's, we, our staff works with them, they have worked with them, they will continue to work with our parents to afford flexibility when and where needed.
It's not in writing, but your staff tends to work.
Yes.
Okay, but, you know, some staff like other parents more than others, so you, you're going to have to be firm in whatever you do. If you do for one, you gotta do for all of them.
Chris, I got a question on the field rentals.
Yes, sir.
Explain that, about 25 to 1800 or whatever, uh, page 24, yes.
We're moving ahead of-
No, ain't it something-
I doctor's office, sorry. That doesn't help me.
We talked about that one.
It's, it's, we were trying to, the, the previous structure was just fields. It wasn't broken into the size of the fields, it wasn't broken into hourly, we had these hour, chunk blocks to, to rent the fields, and so we switched it to an hourly rate and a 12-hour rate to try and keep it simple. Uh, instead of one big field, because some, some of our renters, especially now with Harrisburg and He Springs, they don't feel like they're getting some of the value necessarily, and so we've been listening to their feedback, so we've broken the fields up, a full field, a half field, a third of a field, and there's different rates associated with that. And so it's led us to a higher rate, because if we're doing, if we're breaking the field up into different sizes, it gives us more flexibility and latitude to assess different fees. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I'm just making sure we're charging these people that's using our fields. It was, as we said last time, you know, these turf fields, we're going to have to replace after so many years, whatever. If we got other teams, outsiders coming in wearing our fields out, we need to be charging for this.
We have, we've, we've proposed a resident fee and a non-resident fee for field usage, so that's built into the proposed fee structure as well.
Okay, is it a significant, significant difference from the non-resident? It should be.
It's at least a $15 difference per hour.
Okay.
$5.
I got you.
$5, goes from 10-
$5.
Is it, I'm thinking different, I'm thinking field sizes, sorry. The field sizes, it, it, it increments, it increases. But there is, it's built into the, it's built in there, we've tried to assess that we have a, a, a flat non-county resident fee for our facility rentals, separate than the field rentals as well, which is $25. So if anybody wants to rent a room at a rec center or a shelter, and they're not a county resident, then they would have a, a flat $25 rate assessed to their rental.
Okay, good.
It would help just for this section for me to kind of understand the, all those distinctions for all of these, whether some things per person, per team, per filing, per, whatever it is, just to, because we're, there's a lot of detail that shifts significantly between each one of those, to your point, Billy, between residents versus non-resident, that's captured in one bucket.
If the, the fee schedule where the detail is, we have it all broken out like that, by size of the field, by resident, by non-resident, by hour, it's all broken out in detail.
Okay, yeah.
Well, just one more time, after-school registration child, current fee's 20, and you're saying that's a, a weekly fee?
I said daily fee is what I heard.
It can't be a- It's a daily fee? Then, well, so-
Daily fee is the current fee. The second column is, I think what he clarified, it was a per-month fee.
Correct. We, we've actually taken up, instead of doing a registration fee of $20, so they were charging, well, we were charging before, a $20 registration fee that did not go towards anything but you just registering your child. Then we charged you per day to come to our, our after-school program, which actually ended up being a lot more. So what we, we did was we actually condensed everything and made it into a one monthly fee, so our staff is not having to go behind everyone and look for people and be, play bill collectors, for lack of a better term, and literally it's a one-time, 150 a month.
Now you got me confused, because you said that $20 was for a registration fee, and then there was a per-day charge on top of that?
Correct, that is correct. Yes, sir, that's how the previous fee structure was created.
How much per day?
Per day, it depended on the child and also the day, but it ended up being, if you were going on a field trip, if you're not going on a field trip, it ended up being, I want to say it was 14 or $12 a day. So again, we gave, it's a significant drop between the two years, so for what we proposed is 150 for the month, which actually does go play into trying to help our, the participants.
This will actually be a reduction if-
Yes, sir.
On a per-day, because I think what you're doing is you're, you're, you're doing it in bulk, because what I would imagine is, you still have the staff for the entire month, so you still have the same expense, but if people are just picking certain days-
Correct.
You still have the main expense, but you're not covering the full. This way, it's less per day, but you still have the expense, and you're now gathering for that full month and covering-
That is correct. So now we can actually plan accordingly and take the kids on field trips and knowing how many we will have versus us actually spending staff that we don't need.
It was a big, a big concern I've heard, is parents are being asked to pay for the whole summer at one time in order to reserve a spot. Did y'all, did y'all resolve that issue?
So we're only asking parents, just like after-school, we're only asking them to pay for what they're going to use. So they still have the time if, if it's not full. For example, Indianland, Indianland is completely full, and there's a waiting list. So we have every week available, we didn't allow people to take over weeks that they weren't going to potentially use, because that's what happened last year. We had people that registered for camps and they did not show up, and then that would cost another place, person a spot that would have potentially needed it.
Okay, but I'm, I'm, I'm not sure you addressed what I'm talking about.
Yes, sir, we addressed it.
So yeah, so the answer is, we are still making them pay in advance for the slot.
Yeah, but how many days in advance are you charging? That's my whole point. In other words, you're putting a heavy burden on the parents, and, and even daycare doesn't do that. That's my concern, a while back, that's my concern now, and no, you have not answered my question.
Yes, sir, we, we actually have addressed it, where if a parent needs any type of assistance or anything of that nature, then yes, we will allow them to register without having to pay right away.
Yeah, but, but I think Mr. Blackman's asking, do you have to register for a month, or you, can you register for a week, or how long can you register for?
That's, so you're talking about summer camp versus after-school, so summer camp-
After-school. Say, after-school, if I want to use after-school for a month, can I just do it for that month? Or can I do, do I have to do it for the whole summer?
You just do it for the month. If you're doing after-school, it's just for that month. So you're talking about after, you're talking about summer camp, correct?
Summer camp, having to pay all summer long at one time.
No, sir, if they, if they know for a fact they're going to be there for the entirety of the summer, we ask them to do for a week or two weeks in advance.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
But the full fee schedule, to your point about the different breakdowns, if you look under the last tab that says supplemental, we have every fee that's been changed highlighted and read there and different things, you'll see that under the supplemental tab, but we'll work to clarify some of these fees, so that, um, yeah, under the supplemental, you'll see some red, red numbers and different things in there, um, so you'll see some more of the detail in there, but we'll work on clarifying some of this, because I understand it's a lot in different times, in resident, non-resident, and different things. Okay?
Moving forward on your capital improvement plan, so we're going to change gears here. This is a, this is a summary slide, should be on page number 26 in your books. What you've currently adopted, which you did back in July of 2021, is a 10-year capital improvement plan, so that's for years 2021 through 2031. The current plan aligns to the county strategic plan, two priorities, infrastructure and public safety. If you go back in your books to the supplemental section, you're going to find a chart that lists all of the requests to include in the capital improvement program for FY '25. So it would be good if you land there as we're talking. There are 34 projects that-
It's the next-to-last page, it says 14 from the back of, of your notebook. So the next-to-last, you have the folded one, and then that next-to-last page says number 14 on the bottom.
Forward the folder.
Yeah, number 14's in the bottom right, at the very back, if you go all the way to the back of your notebook, turn, and then you'll see a folded sheet, then go to the next one, and it says, says 14 on the bottom.
The next one.
Yeah, the next one.
The one before that.
So that's a total list of all the CIP that Jamie's going to be referring to.
It looks like everyone's landed there. So we have on that particular table 34 projects. They total these requests, 22.4 million from various departments, and what you will see is there are two rankings. So you've got the planning commission's ranking of those 34 projects, and then you've got our county administrators ranking. So the top five on this next slide, you will see in your, those first two columns, the projects that the planning commission ranked, these are their top five. So if nothing else, we would like to see these top five added into the current adopted CIP. The next two columns are Dennis Marstol, county administrator, his five projects and their ranking. If nothing else, you know, for FY '25, we would like to see these five projects included in the CIP.
And we don't see the fire request for storage buildings, because that's already taken care of in ARPA?
No, um, this is where she's going to highlight that of the 34 and down here, my rankings are different than the planning commission's rankings because- are different than the planning commission's rankings because these were what were presented in FY25. But the CIP is funded through different sources. So for instance, the Indianland Fire Station is on there, but depending upon some other decisions, that may come out of a different bucket. Same thing, you'll see on here, some of this, this, on the screen right here, the bottom left, the building UPS fire, that can come out of a one-time fund balance allocation, or our last program, most CIP programs are paid for out of doing bond debt. So we kind of have three different funding sources, or the operating budget, we can roll some of this into the operating budget. And so that's why there's some of the difference. I had different information or understanding than with the planning commission, but this is just the new FY25. When we get to the fire regional, we're going to have that conversation at the end as a different funding stream conversation. But if you go to the next slide, Ms. Provuznek, one more. Now where we had the 7 million. There we go. So the bottom bullet there is we have not taken on new debt, general obligation debt against our general obligation fund is for CIP projects. We've used ARPA funds, we've used some other different one-time funds, but the thought is of these projects between the planning commission and what I've identified is potentially going out this year, forcing general obligation debt to cover some of these CIP projects. Now again, looking at this in the 10-year, there's 34 requests, we may only be able to get to 12. But this is really just looking at what's on the plate this year, knowing of different funding sources, and there's a bigger picture with the fire service in particular, that we've got a way, and then that will help me determine how you all want to go forward on the funding streams for these.
Before I can make it an informed decision, as we, as we look at these, you know, if we want to go to general obligation debt, I'd like to know that as we, as we're ranking these things in order. Otherwise, otherwise you can't really make an educated decision.
You know, Dennis, your top five that's on the last, next to the last page reflects what's on page 27, right?
Yes. The answer to that is yes, Ms. McGriff?
Close to the planning commission and your recommendation.
That is right.
Well, it's, it's got both of them on that same page, is that what you're?
Yeah, his is on one side.
His is on the right, planning commission's on the left.
And when we presented to the planning commission, the question was asked, the, of these projects, are they consistent with the current comprehensive plan? And so that was their frame of reference as they were going through these projects and did their ranking, and they did take a vote at that meeting. They voted unanimously to recommend these five projects for inclusion into the current CIP. So you'd be amending the currently adopted CIP to include these five if you choose to do that.
And as we were saying earlier about there's different funding sources, one of the reasons, if you look at the second one there, the 2024 road rehabilitation, I know that there's a funding stream for that. So I know that that generally is going to be done to some degree. We won't have to do general obligation debt for that unless you want to. But so that's why, just some of the differences and nuances, that although it's all under CIP, and we say CIP are generally major projects above 5,000, so a lot of things in these days, in the cost-wise, land in the CIP, but now our chore is to identify the different funding streams on how we bring some of this to life.
So your justification was different from their justification.
Indeed.
At some point, I know this is for 2025, but council, if there's projects on here that we don't see, we'll have a say-so too. Want the fire.
Absolutely. Yeah, so we want you to see what's on the list, what's requested. If there are some things or things you know that are out there that you want to move up to 25, if we find the funding stream or something, make sure it's on the radar. But this is what our department directors and evaluation have brought forward. And again, unfortunately, we try to keep it contained in CIP, but it has some different homes across the budget.
So I'm sorry, so the five that you have is the 7 million? The 22 million is for all 34?
Correct.
Okay, so the 7 million is for the five that the administrator has chosen?
Not, not precisely.
Not precise.
It's, it's a ballpark, not knowing what council wants to do or considers well. I just want to highlight, we've not done an general obligation bond for CIP in the last basically three years. I see that in order to make a movement on some of these requests, it's going to take that.
Okay. So I, I guess for me, what I'd like to know is, which are the projects that we're moving forward with, and where are they coming from? So that we have a total picture of what the expectations are, and then tied to that, what are any additional operating costs that will be associated with those capital costs?
Agreed. And so number one, Ms. Provuznek, if we go back to page 27, which ones are we moving forward with? Number one on the left side is squarely in your court tonight and next week in first reading, and that will clarify a picture a lot on how we address that. So that's why we want to put all this kind of out there and then find the moving funding streams for it.
These are just recommendations. Council can pick whatever they want on there, so that's why it's hard right now to, to put a, a number to everything.
That is correct, Mr. Parks.
But as we go down the road, that number will develop.
That's right. Without further ado, I'm going to introduce Ms. Snowden, deputy county administrator, to talk to you about enterprise resource planning.
I'm going to keep this very brief, but right now, our current financial software system has been in place since 1998. So right now, we do find ourselves in some financial and data silos with even, even within the same departments. Audit trails are manual, cumbersome, and contingent upon institutional knowledge. Software is not automated and does not provide real-time access to information and data analytics. Right now, our accounts payable process, we have one person touching the same piece of paper maybe three or four times. We're duplicating efforts and it's very inefficient, and it's, the process is, our budget management process is cumbersome, not just for our department directors, elected officials and financial staff, but also you have us hustling because a lot of times you all want information. For example, the, the compensation for all of the, all of our staff, our HR team did that manually for over 600 employees. So, so what we're looking at is where we need to go in the future, and last year, you all approved the beginnings of looking at an ERP system that would help us streamline and more modernize. So we are in year one, after several months, one of the first projects I worked on was actually working with procurement and many of our key end-users to select a consultant and writing, and they were in town, I think, last week doing a needs assessment, talking with the departments and seeing, or learning our functions. And so essentially, we know that this is not going to be an easy process, but it's necessary for us to look at where we want to be in the next 30 years. So, so for your consideration to look at funding, and it would be a multi-year funding because this would be a five, a five-year process, so.
Stephanie.
Yes, ma'am.
So in year one, we've completed needs assessment?
No, we're, we've just begun. The year one is just completing, selecting an experienced ERP consultant, a consultant that can come and look at our functions, because what they would do is actually look at what our needs are and then help us, and then help us secure a company down the road that would be able to meet all of our needs.
So year one is in the budget already, Dennis?
We funded in FY24 for the consultant, and then.
Year two to three, will that be in this year's budget? Are you making a recommendation?
Yes, and so still, I believe at that level, it's roughly around 150,000. But then when we get into, yeah, then we get into finding a system that does all of our functions from payroll to procurement, purchasing, HR, then that will be the biggest software purchase. But we want to plan for it as part of CIP.
But we know it's coming.
Yeah, that's where, we keep telling you, we're trying to tell you that.
But is that going to be, is that going to be year four? I mean, is that going to be year four when we do the purchasing?
No, we, if.
When are we going, when's it actually going to start when we get funded?
I think the biggest expense will be between years two and three, because that's when you're purchasing the software, and that's when you're then training your staff on the software, doing the optimization, and then you go out to year five expansion. If there are some modules for doing our work order tracking, for all of our building maintenance and different things like that, but the bulk of the work will be coming here, year two, year three.
I just want us to remember that this is a five-year process, and when it comes to the table, we know what's happening. 26 years is a long time. I don't know how we managed to even get, get by. I mean, three people handling the same paperwork, that's ridiculous.
So Ms. Snowden.
It'd work, but it's not effective working.
What is, what does it cost? In other words, if we, if we programmed in some recurring money for the consultant in year one, so if we carry that same money forward since, well, we're still going to pay him probably in year two, how much more money are you, do you think we're going to need to fund year two, which is the year I think we're looking at now, planning for?
Approximately 150,000. We won't know what the true cost will be until we actually get back what we need. Keep in mind, there's a lot of backend. We're talking about procurement, HR, finance, right now, our treasurer's actually getting the receipts and putting them in manually so that we can have it in smart fusion, so.
But how much do we spend this year for the consultant, about?
I believe approximately 120,000.
So you think the year two, for our budget purposes this year, right now, 150 is what we'd probably need to look at?
Yes, sir.
But year three then would really be the big, big year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
We're going to live in heat springs.
You're still going to pay taxes.
Right. Thank you, Terry.
Moving along, this is your debt service. These are your principal and interest payments on existing notes that you have, existing debt. This particular fund is supported by other revenue sources. So for example, the detention center, you borrowed for that. The hospitality, the regional park is paid for out of the hospitality tax. So you have a variety of revenue streams that are contributing to paying off the debt. And again, this is the same rhetoric here, where we've shown you over the 10-year period what you paid in principal and interest payments in FY19 through FY23, and then we have this jump here for FY25 budget at 10.5, I believe that's 10.5 million, and what we must pay in principal and interest payments. And then of course, once you start retiring, some of the existing debt, you have increased capacity. This fund has its own millage. We, we have another form of how we replace vehicles and heavy equipments, not form, fund. This is Fund 11. It's the capital improvement fund or our replacement fund. And what you see here listed are each of the proposed projects or equipment replacements that have been requested for FY25, and it's ordered from greatest to least. And then of course, you know, we have our sheriff replacement vehicles here, and we have that earmark in federal award, of federal dollars. And in order to, there's your total right there, 3.5, that totals two. This is, has its own millage, this particular fund. The millage for this is 5.3. In order for us to pay for all those things listed there, we would have to increase the mills by two for a total of 7.3 mills, and what's driving that is wanting to continue to replace vehicles for the sheriff's office.
Can you go back one slide? The, the total's not in our books, and we need to write that down.
Yeah, and I had a question about the debt service, you said that's millage also?
Yes, it has its own mills, but there's.
So the mills on that's going to increase in '25, is that what we're saying?
No, I am not suggesting a millage increase in the debt service fund because there's a variety of revenue sources that will help pay down that 10 million number.
And we'll give you a full debt, full millage picture here at the end, but the debt service truly is, it has fluctuated. It went down last year.
I know, I know it went down, and that really offset the millage increase that, that, that we, that we passed through. So I'm concerned that it's going to jump up and then, and we.
And you're, that's why I wanted to clarify.
Our real millage is going to increase and.
So our policy has been that we only use this fund and only adjust it by the amount needed to pay on the debt, the outstanding debt. But we have it all in one fund, so now the 100 million that we just bonded for the detention center and the regional park now are showing up on our debt, but it will not, our debt fund can go down again next year.
Yeah, I understand.
Because we have the different revenue streams to pay for the new debts. But this is where, this is where I'm suggesting, I want to get us on a rolling capital with a stable millage, because we went from 9.6 mills down to 6.9 mills just because debt rolled off. And this is where I'm saying, we have capacity at least for 7 million for CIP, because I don't want to continue to be on this roller coaster up and down, up and down. I think, yes, it's beneficial last year that it offset the operating millage, but if we're going to get down to zero mills in this debt fund, is that a good thing or not?
Taxpayer might think it's a good thing, as long as the millage doesn't go up.
But if we have needs for sheriff vehicles or other things, it's not in this one, but if we do bond for big things, if we don't do separate millages for fire, whatever, our only option is the general obligation debt.
Just remember, if you establish a rolling debt amount that you want to attain every year, it's kind of like having your Visa card in your wallet. Well, I think I'll just leave $4,000 balance on mine every month, so it'll stay stable. I, I don't, I don't buy that logic.
I might agree, Alan.
This is the replacement fund, which includes the vehicle replacements for the sheriff's office and other large equipment, such as ambulances and the like. The current millage for this fund is 5.3. In order to fund all those things listed here at the 3.5 million, we would propose a mill increase of two to 7.3 for this particular fund. At this time, I will turn the floor over to our CFO, Sabrina Harris, who will talk to you about the expenditure side of the house. Thank you.
All right, good evening, Mr. Chairman, council members. I'll start us off by just reminding us of kind of how we've gotten to where we are with our operating budget as a part of our budget development process. On average in our budget, it's about 41% of the funding that is dedicated to covering salaries and benefits for our employees. We knew that as a part of this process, we'd need to make sure that we replaced or that we, you know, we replaced the million dollars that was one-time funding that we used to close the budget gap from last year. As a part of this process as well, we've worked to streamline the processes and also maximize the taxpayer dollars. And so we've looked at strategies outlined here to realize savings in our budget, switching from Verizon to FirstNet three years ago. We've updated our copier contract and eliminated some printers. Our IT department is actively working with departments to look at their activity related to their copier usage and adjusting their budgets accordingly. We've undergone replacement of our lighting to LED lighting, creating savings in our utilities budgets, and as well as ongoing work also in our IT department to look at our phone systems and review how we might transit, continue to transition to the voice over IP. All right.
What does VOIP be?
It's, I'm not the techie, but it's Voice Over Internet Protocol. Yeah, so it's a way of streamlining our voice and video communications usage, streamlining it into one place, managing it in one...
Using the internet instead of like phone lines.
All right, so one of the things that we've also done is...
Young people know how to do that. Us old folks don't know how to do that.
It's not new technology, it's been around for a while.
I've been around for a while too.
I, I've had it at work for about five years, so...
Okay.
Your son told you about that, Brian, you know him.
No, actually, the comporium salesman came in and sold us on it, so...
Is there anything that we're doing with AI to look at efficiencies and streamlining more processes?
As an enterprise, I, I really can't answer that. I know individually, you know, I use AI, you know, just on a very small scale to try to be efficient, you know, as efficiently possible, as possible with, you know, putting together process manuals, creating simple things like that, but enterprise-wide, there probably is space for us to be able to take advantage of the technology.
That's probably something that I, I would suggest that we look into as a council and put some budget dollars into.
And the Microsoft product is Pilot, right?
It's Copilot.
Copilot, yeah, Copilot. That's something that we will get, I think, standard, but yeah, enterprise-wide, we don't have technology, but with what's coming out now, there's a lot of opportunity.
Scott to the rescue.
So with Microsoft, there's Co...
Copilot.
But right now, we're on the government tenant, so it's not there yet. So we're trying to, one of the things in my budget this year was to move us towards the M licensing that will actually let us, so when it does, we can turn that on countywide.
All right, so some of the other things that we have taken into consideration as a part of the budget development process is addressing those things that are multi-year funding issues, and so looking at making sure that we address things like the tire replacements that are needed for our fire vehicles, the replacement schedule for our sheriff's vehicles, looking at the mileage and the age of those vehicles to make sure they're replaced appropriately, purchasing of new ambulances, making sure that we cover the costs for the upfitting associated with those vehicles, and maintaining the service contracts that will go along with those in future years. Accounting for our supply chain issues where we may be planning to make purchases now, but because of the lag in the supply chain, we might not be able to effectively make the purchase until a few years out, and that can cost us more in doing that as it relates to purchasing vehicles, construction, or purchasing equipment. We're looking at how we'll be impacted by inflation, gas and supplies and so on, and also making sure that we are responding to legislation that might impact us, where we are anticipating an increase in health insurance premiums and an increase in overtime as it relates to certain positions. All right, so as we have gone through this budget development season with departments, we've had departments look at their budget plans for next year and really dig into their budgets to make sure that they are building their budgets around what their needs will be. There are twenty-one departments that have not asked for a budget increase. Nine of that group have actually decreased their budgets going into the new year. We've had some departments that they haven't asked for an increase in over three years, the probate judges department being one of them. As a part of this process and with our strategy to present a budget to you that does not include a millage increase, we've asked departments to go back and revisit their budgets and look for where they might be able to find flexibility or efficiencies in their budget to submit to us a five percent cut in their non-personnel expense codes. So some of the things that were submitted back to us, we know will put a strain on departments. Some of the examples listed here, like in our animal shelter department, they would have to eliminate the span neutering program. In our legal department, they would have to outsource or contract the outside legal support, do less of that. The roads department, purchasing more stone, we know that's been an ongoing concern, making sure that they have the stone that they need for the work that has to be done.
Matt can interrupt just a minute. Didn't we just recently added money for stone because they had to have it, really? So that really wasn't a, a good cut item, I, I don't think, but anyway, just...
Right, and we know that the request for the departments to submit this, they're looking across all of their budgets, and there may not be any place where they can actually make the cut, but they're submitting what was asked. And so we know as lean as budgets are, you know, they're cutting down to the bone, so this would be, you know, a decision about whether we would actually realize the cut or if there's some other alternative, but still making sure that departments have what they need so they can maintain service levels.
But if all these cuts that were given to us are things like stone that we know we got to have, then really those cuts, as in the narrative's been given to us, are really a non, a non-starter, non-event maybe.
That, that five percent public works done for the stone, or sown here for stone, that might not be his, where he cut his at. That's just saying on here that that could be reduced.
No, well, that's what he suggested. So there's a list of things to get to his five percent, so, but to your point, the fact that we are doing this budget transfer now to do new stone, what he asked for still is less than he wants, but he have, he may have more than what he got this year.
So can I ask a couple of questions?
Remember, you wanted a cut. You wanted everybody to look at their budget and recommended a cut.
I didn't say that.
You did.
I said I want us to look at the cost-saving measures, yeah. I didn't say five percent, and I didn't say all departments.
Okay, let me, so if I could just ask a couple of questions. So how much are we talking about in these cuts? What's the total amount that we're looking at and how much is each item?
That's on the next slide, so we'll get there, I believe. If you want to finish up here real quick, anything you want to add on this one, Ms. Harris?
Yeah, just a little bit, just looking at our future planning, we've also made sure to include as a part of this recommendation a contingency budget to address things that come up, you know, the unexpected that come up as well. So we'll talk about that as we move forward.
Then to answer Mr. Louise's question, on the next page, on page thirty-eight is, so you're correct. I think, Ms. Harris, if I, if you did a five percent decrease of the current FY twenty-four operating, not personnel, not capital, that was roughly eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand, or is it more?
No, it's right about eight hundred and ninety thousand.
So just looking at that at the surface, to a five percent reduction of the FY twenty-four adopted, would have been about eight hundred and eighty thousand. We asked, I reviewed, and this is where we've landed. So five hundred and eighty-nine or five hundred and ninety thousand out of a potential eight hundred and eighty thousand that, that were offered up as potential reductions in FY twenty-four that could be carried to FY twenty-five. And again, this is where I'm saying, we are dealing with the impacts of growth, delivering more in service delivery, but also making sure we maximize the budget and have a lean budget. And I think this was useful to help understand if we want some reductions, this is where the department directors are saying, and you're right, not every department necessarily needs to give at the same amount, so to speak, and there are some departments who we did not accept their reductions, such as the animal shelter. And so this five hundred and ninety would be where I start as I balance priorities for concern if there's too much fluff in a budget or concern that we're not at maximum performance of our revenue, this is an option.
If these departments do run into a budget crunch, they can always come back and say, listen, with the five percent cut, I'm, I'm in need of two thousand dollars. That'd be a decision that you would make, right?
Well, that's why we are suggesting as part of this budget to have a hundred thousand dollar contingency. When you have a lean budget and knowing that, I think this is lean, that we have a source that is at least budgeted for, so we're not going into fund balance, we're not having to go back and cut from somewhere else. So I do think it's a, a sound budgeting decision to have a contingency when you have lean budgets, knowing this.
One, one quick thing, though, I would like to see the other department's four hundred and six thousand as a large amount. That's exactly what I was, so I'm, I'm still confused because the items that I'm seeing on page thirty-seven don't necessarily align with the items that are on page thirty-eight unless it's captured in that other department's bucket. And to Mr. Blackman's point, I'd like to see those itemized. So I, I'm just not, I guess it's not clear what we're reducing.
Well, Dennis just said that some of them, when they presented, he didn't accept it, for instance, the animal shelter, because you felt like it was a need there. And with the hundred thousand dollar contingency, I tell you, once we move forward, this is what we have asked them to look at, the tight budget, reducing what they think they can get by with. I mean, these are the department heads doing this. I don't believe in going through budgets item by item and making recommendations.
We have that list, we have that list.
I just need the total list, and then what I'd like to see is what the department heads recommended, because to Ms. McGriff's point, it is the department heads that have submitted these, but it's Mr. Marstall's decision on what has been reduced and what has been presented. So I'd like to see both of those.
But in, in, to, to, not to...
Nobody else has to look at it. If you don't want to look at it, you don't have to, but I would.
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying...
Do you have that information available next week?
Mr. Chairman, can I just finish my thought, please, ma'am, mister? We have gone through, we know that the department heads have given us their budget, given Dennis their budget, he's gone through it, they've discussed, he's made his recommendation. I don't want to see no department heads what they put in. I'm not looking at every department head's budget and going through it line item by line item. That's not our job, that's Dennis's job. I'm just saying.
I would like to know about that four hundred and six, is there, is there certain big numbers in that thing that makes that four hundred and six? I mean, I...
That's all other departments...
I know it's all, all the departments, but I want to know if their department's got fifty thousand dollars in there.
We will have the list for you next week, so you can see it. So here, yeah, here's that initial list, we just want to give you a flavor, but let you know there's more out there, and then getting into the meat of the operating budget.
All right, so we will provide that. All right, so some of the major factors that were considered as we begin to build the budget are incorporating an across-the-board increase for both full-time and part-time employees, considering a merit pool based on the annual performance appraisal scores, a Christmas supplement, there are some other salary adjustments to include the health insurance, some position upgrades, the requirement for overtime, some new positions, there are some existing position pay adjustments for certain department directors, as well as new operating requests and the requests that, for the ERP system. All right, so before we start looking at some of the details for what's included in the request, just to look back at our fund balance summary for the year, and so where we ended fiscal year 2023 with a fund balance of just over forty, fifty-four million, during the interim, there've been council-approved adjustments to appropriate fund balance of right at four million, and we anticipate closing out this year with approximately one point seven million in fund balance that will add to that, that will add to that total, and we expect to end this year with a fund balance of approximately fifty-two million dollars. All right, so just looking at potential fund balance appropriations that are included in the recommendation for next year, you'll see the first thing on the list is that hundred twenty-five thousand for our ERP system. And included in this request are budgets for communications marketing, for public education campaigns and the community survey, the Christmas supplement, which will be housed in the HR budget, a data room upgrade for IT, as well as iPads for fire and rescue, a mobile home audit program for the assessors department, airbags for fire service, EMS, two bulletproof, bullet stab-proof vests, two per vehicle, phase two of the traffic calming study in our roads department for parks and recreation, ball field lights, the parks master plan, and funding to establish the Friends of Parks and Recreation nonprofit, as well as the contingency fund of a hundred thousand dollars. So in total, a fund balance appropriation in next year's budget of right at one point All right, so what we see here is this, it would be the budget recommendation if we had not, if we do not do a millage increase. So taking into account what we expect to, new revenue that we expect for next year, and taking into account the departmental reductions that were made, that we would use that funding to realign within the budget to come, to cover some of the priorities for next year. For no millage increase, we will be able to make sure that we cover our obligations with the employer-paid portion of our health insurance, as well as the overtime. We'd be able to provide a two percent across-the-board increase for part-time and full-time staff, also the Christmas supplement. We'd be able to cover the non-personnel expenses or requests that were submitted by departments, as well as our one-time fund balance appropriation. So we would not need to increase the millage to do these things, and so this is just one scenario.
What, what's the parks master plan?
That was part of the strategic plan, where we do the assessment of all of our, I'm sorry, can't remember how many, twenty-some parks and facilities, but also that is what I think kind of helped lead to our heat springs and Harrisburg Road Soccer Complex, thinking about the future, about where we might want future parks and recreation facilities. So we, we haven't done that, it's been called for in the strategic plan, so again, we want to move forward on that as part of the strategic plan to help us assess that.
Well, you know, we, this, this year's budget, we had nothing in there for maintaining the heat springs soccer fields, and the mulch out there looks just pathetic, and so we're going to sit there and study about a master plan about where we want more when we're not even taking care of what we got. I'm, I'm bothered by that.
If I can continue to move us forward, included in your binder, it may be in the insert in the front or possibly in the supplemental section, there's a breakdown of what's included in that one point five five nine million in the departmental request.
And that's the first page directly behind your supplemental tab. If you turn to the supplemental tab at the back, the first page is what I'm recommending. So out of all the requests, which probably got up to five million dollars, these are the one point five million in new expenditures that I would include. Are you finding that page?
After the supplemental.
What's the tab? Under the supplemental tab?
supplemental information.
It's after, it's on page forty-three. Isn't it forty-two and forty...
We have the full list. Does it look like that? This is the supplemental tab.
Okay, the one that you handed out?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, you didn't, we didn't put it in the book, okay. It's a handout, I'm...
It's a handout.
Is there a handout? Do you have one? I'll make sure everyone has one.
There's some more handouts there.
Yeah, that's it, that's it. Is there any more handouts down there? Do you have any extras?
I didn't get a handout, you didn't get a handout.
We'll make a real quick copy here.
I don't think Allen was here when she was passing them out.
Do we have any extras? We'll get a quick, there we go. So yeah, that's just so you can see what is a full detail again, and we'll make sure here within a couple of minutes that we have the copy for everybody.
Steve, can you slide those down this way? I think that's...
Oh, that's them, on the dais, that's them. We're okay, Ms. Shane, we're okay. Yep, that's them. We're good, thank you.
You got plenty of copies.
Thank you. So yeah, if you want to tag that under your supplemental tab or wherever you want to put it, but you have that detail.
I'm sorry, what is this again?
When we say the one point five five nine, this is the amount of new expenditures that I am recommending within the operating portion of all the department's budget. So out of all the requests for new things, departments ask for to do service delivery, these are the ones that I believe we can quote-unquote afford, that best meet our objectives and goals going forward, but it highlights what they're for and some of the different purchases or spending for that.
Okay. All right, so I'll also point out here on, on this list that we're looking at with a no millage increase, there are two items here that we're... a no millage increase, there are two items here that we're required to do, and that would be the health insurance, the employer-paid portion of the health insurance increase, as well as the overtime.
What page are we on now?
Still on slide 42. On slide 42, and the next to the last line, I will third from the bottom, that 1.55 million, that list that you have is the breakdown of what's included in that dollar amount. The new overtime rule? So there are certain categories of positions that we're required to move them to an exempt status. And right now, because they're not in exempt status, if they were to work overtime, they would incur the new overtime, the new overtime rate for those positions. And so if we do not move them to the, the new exempt category, then this 207,000 is the impact for overtime for those staff. If we do move them to the new category, we'll still incur a cost with adjusting their salaries, but the, because they would be in the exempt status, they would not be charged the overtime rate.
We've got a couple of issues at play here. The feds just came out with this rule last week that said effective July 1, that those in a certain category at a certain pay level have to be paid overtime. But then again, come January 1, they're moving that threshold up again. So our option is to either pay more overtime for those positions at certain salary levels, or move them up to the salary level that is exempt and we don't pay overtime. So we've kind of done the calculations both ways. The maximum, we're thinking even with the adjustment come January, the 207, so this would actually be dispersed between either our wages line item or our overtime line items. But this is a new rule that we just found out and scrambled last week.
So we wanted to make sure that we gave an option for the no operating millage increase. So no matter what, this is where we stand. If we don't increase the millage at all, and we can adjust the things on this list, you know, if that's council's preference, but with a no millage increase, this is what we can do. All right, so just looking at a different snapshot of that, we do have an option that does include a millage increase, where we would be able to do those things that had already been highlighted, as well as, excuse me, as well as some items that have been prioritized by our administrator, to include the merit increase for staff, to incentivize our staff, as well as some other pay adjustments that I'll, you know, give you a breakdown on those as well, some new, new positions, as well as the... I'm sorry, the additions of just the merit increase, the other pay adjustments, and the new positions. And so with this scenario, if council's willing to consider a millage increase, these are the things that we're recommending to include, that we would allocate funds for. And although the slide says up to a 5 mil increase, these, this increase is $2.8 million at the bottom, which is the additional funding that will be required. It would only require a 3.5 mil increase.
So let me ask you for clarification, Sabrina. So the no operating mil increase would, would take care of page 42?
Yes.
But if we want to add those additional positions that we discussed, and some of the other merit increases and whatever, we go with the, the other option, which is a 3.5 mil increase?
That is correct.
Okay.
And we will now break that down. If you want to go to the 3.5 mil option, turning here on to the next page, these would be some of the specific breakdown that we're talking about the millage increase would support.
Now, let's go back to page 43. Now, out of these options that's presented, can we pick and choose or discuss or say?
Absolutely. Council has the final prerogative.
You know, I can, I can say what I'm good with, what I'm comfortable with.
Let me actually, if we can walk through these and then hear some of your feedback on this option, if you wouldn't mind with that.
Can I ask just some clarification questions? Because I think you just said the increases in page 43 total 2,842?
No, the full package would yield, that we would need additional funds totaling the 2,842.
But if we, but if we kept the items... Okay.
They kept the items from the no mil and then they added to it.
Okay.
Right. And so, you know, and I'll just talk through some of the differences, because the millage increase, it includes an across-the-board salary increase of 2.5 versus the 2% in scenario number one. So there's an additional cost there, as well as adding on the merit increase, the other pay adjustments, and the new positions.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
What is a new one-time FB appropriation?
Those are those fund balance items that are listed here.
FB's fund balance, so we're pulling from our savings because they're one-time expenses. So that way, you wouldn't put in the operating budget to add to the millage, similar to some things we did last year. So that's accounting for, we can do these things out of fund balance that wouldn't impact the millage, because they're just one-time purchases.
Yeah, but that shouldn't be in, included in the 5 mil increase, should it?
Well, we're just highlighting the total budget picture here. So we'll get to the granular here as she finishes up with the other parts with the positions. If you'll go ahead there, Ms. Harris.
That's a, you said it's a 3.5 mil, not a 5 mil increase?
Correct. Well, we said up to, because it depends on what you want to do. We're just leaving all options on the table.
But that, now, but that, that, that listing on there is 3 mils. Okay.
I'm, I'm recommending a 3.5 mil.
Okay.
Increase. And this is how I would suggest, if we're going to raise a millage, this is how I'm suggesting we would use the revenue from that to spend on these different things for compensation and other investments for our operating expenses.
That 690,000 shouldn't even be in there.
It is not factored against the millage.
It's included in the 5 mil.
But it's, he's going to use it to offset, but it's not included, right?
Correct. It shouldn't be added against the millage.
It's, it's not in the millage. It's the off, it's offset.
Still, why is it on there then?
You, just so you can see the full budget, if, if we didn't have it on there, and we wanted to do those things, it would impact the millage. The only way we can do these one-time expenditures is through fund balance expense. Otherwise, I would recommend them, but it would be on the millage increase. So we wanted to give you the full picture that...
I was looking at that 2.8 as a total. That's not...
Yeah, the 2.8 million, and, and I, I see where you're going. The 2.8 million is not the total of these things added here. 2.8 million just represents the additional funding that we would need for next year.
That's, that's, but that's what I was saying, because I calculated what the difference is, and it's 1.7 million. So that's why I was asking that question. So is it the 2.8 million, or is it the 1.7?
It's 3.5 mils, whatever that comes to.
No, but we can't see, this is part where this is our responsibility to look at this and look at the details and confirm.
If we're going to do anything, we need to probably astrid that one-time fund balance and set it aside and just make a note that it's not included, but we're using it, but it's not included in this total.
But why, it matters, like what the difference is.
You can put it somewhere else. It's going to show up somewhere else, right, Dennis? Yeah.
Yes, and I'm making sure we're getting there, because I'm, I'm tracking with you.
Because the difference between the across-the-board salary increase is 272,978. We then added 125,000 for the merit increase. We added 491,338 for the other pay adjustments, and then we added 847,14 for the new positions. All of that together is 1,730,30, if my math is correct.
It is, and that is why the 1.7 gets us to the 3.5 mil increase.
So the 2.8 is a 5 mil increase. It just doesn't cover...
No. We're just showing the total impact, even with the fund balance. But the millage, you're right, the millage number you're working from is 1.7.
1.7 is 3.5.
Probably needs to be reflected on that page somewhere.
So we'll clarify, but again, we'll see, because we've got a couple of summary pages coming up here. We'll see if we can clarify it along that way there. But yes, the millage 3.5 is generated from the 1.7.
Yeah, because you had said it's 518 for 1 mil?
Correct. So Ms. Harris, if you want to see if we can get to the comparison, or go through the next slides.
All right, so just looking at the position adjustments that are included in the millage increase request, there are multiple position, existing position upgrades, seven in total across these departments listed at the top, EMS, roads, delinquent tax, finance, and Parks and Recreation. So that 196,000 represents the additional funding that would be needed to support that. Included in this is position adjustments or salary adjustments for 31 corrections officers, increasing their salaries by $5,000. There are six positions, five director and one assistant director position, where salaries would be increased to a minimum for directors. The sheriff's department has two positions that were funded or partially funded by a grant, the victim's advocate positions. And so this $47,000 and change would cover the difference in the salaries that was covered by the grant. And there's a position in the treasurer's office that's currently seasonal, that they are requesting to convert that position to part-time.
And I do want to highlight, and we'll do it on the new positions, on this one, the sheriff and I just had another conversation and clarified that actually there are two other grant-funded positions that are also expiring that we have not accounted for in this. So again, this is where the flexibility comes into play about what you want to do or don't do. But yeah, there are two existing positions. One of them, a current officer that we need to bring to your attention is also on the request list.
Is the adjustment for the assessor in these numbers as well?
One of the assessor, that wasn't requested. Assessor? Auditor?
The auditor, I'm sorry.
Yes, the auditor only is in this, yes.
Is included in this.
Yes, is in the, the increased director salary, yes. That is just the auditor.
Okay.
Among four other department directors.
Right, included in that director, increasing directors to minimum is the auditor, the treasurer, animal shelter, building maintenance, and two positions at the airport, one director and one assistant director.
And that was based upon previous council conversations.
Now, Dennis, you said you had a conversation with the sheriff. Is that included already in?
No, it was requested, but we had a miscommunication about the two grant positions. There's actually four grant positions. So we under, I understood different ones, but there are two more in addition to these.
Will it get included at some point, the additional two?
I can add that in, but that impacts, that impacts the...
That's what I'm asking. Are you recommending that?
I need to take until next Wednesday to see how we might address that.
Okay.
Can I ask just another clarifying question? So if, if we didn't make the salary adjustments or provide the merit increases, are we likely to lose staff as a result of that?
When you say salary adjustments across the board, or, there's a whole, there's a compensation package there.
I, I'm talking about the ones that we were just looking at, the position adjustments.
Oh. Everyone makes their choice on how they want to earn their living. I think clearly it makes us more competitive and makes us a more appealing work, workplace.
Okay. And then I'm looking at the information technology on the additional sheet that we were provided today. So for Department 26, information technology, the 817,000, if we didn't do that, could we continue to function as we are today?
It would be a struggle.
But we could.
We could. There would be some software. These are partial agreements that we would have to discontinue, and that could impact service level and customer service opportunities.
So the, this includes continuation of existing agreements?
Yeah, a lot of them are, software agreements going forward.
Okay.
Dennis, the sheet here with the department descriptions and the administrators' approval per department, is that included in the positions adjustments?
The what, what number?
This sheet here.
Yes, the 1.5, yes, that is included. That will happen without a millage increase. That can be accommodated without a millage increase with the reductions that we carry forward from FY '24.
But the, um, millage increase option will not be included if we don't make...
That, that's included.
Okay.
That 1.5 million is included. So if you go to the next slide there, Ms. Harris.
1.5 is included and...
Both options, both options.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, let's go one more, so you can highlight. Let's see. There we go. So positions, we did have, Ms. Harris wants to talk about, we had 55 new positions requested.
55 new positions requested. Of those 55, these nine were prioritized. And so we've had dialogue with council before about establishing a grant function. And so I'll just emphasize those two at the top, you know, real quickly, the grant coordinator and grant writer that we would expect would be able to generate either revenue replacement or additional funding that would cover the cost of the writer, the writer position, and the grant coordinator were able to realign a position that we currently have and only request the funding for the cost to upgrade that position to a grant coordinator. Another of the positions I'll highlight on this list is the Veterans Affairs, that benefits coordinator, and the need there to be able to have someone on staff to, you know, do eligibility research to make sure that we're not foregoing costs for someone that might be required to pay, but they are able to piggyback off of the benefit of someone who's possibly deceased. And so someone to be able to really do the work to make sure that we are being able to collect where we need to.
Well, if I rescue a director, I don't think this is a year that we need to be making that kind of move. If we have that kind of money, I'd like to put it in more firefighters. I do like the Veterans Affairs Benefits Coordinator. I like the Corrections Officer. You know, with the sheriff, much as I like law enforcement, maybe we might have to pull one of those, but the grant writers, I'd rather pull them before I pull anything from the sheriff's department.
I agree. The grant coordinator and the grant writer, I think they should be pulled. The benefits coordinator for the veterans, and possibly the, I'm like you, on the fire director. We can save almost a mil just pulling those four.
This is, Dennis's recommended budget. I mean, we can't vote at this workshop, so I guess we'll be looking at first reading for formal, formal recommendations and amendments to the budget.
And you'll have next Wednesday.
It'll move forward like this to first reading.
Right, I understand that.
We can make, I can listen and make some suggested tweaks for first reading, because I hope that now you're hearing this for the first time, you have to digest it. Next Wednesday is nothing dedicated, but more budget discussion. So if you have some more thoughts, I certainly, we want to provide you the answers to the questions you've asked today to make sure. But we built in an extra meeting day, so you all feel comfortable when we get to first reading. So there can be some adjustments for first reading. And I would like to say I probably will work on writing, but keep in mind that fire rescue director position, as it is now, that is looking to potentially be an August timeframe. So if you want to kick that to next year, that means I have one month to hide... to hire and cross-train with the fire director. And I'm trying to avoid that by doing the three-fourth year position so we can do the recruitment. I see that being more than a month-long recruitment, but then having crossover time and training. And so I think that's an important position to start this year so we have that knowledge that doesn't walk out.
I think, you know, our fire director and emergency management director now does both jobs well. One person can do both of those jobs now. I like, I'm like Alan, I think we're jumping in this, that's the salary we could save. Our previous director before Darren done a good job doing both. So I don't have a problem with both of them, them one person doing both of those jobs. He's got good people under him that, to help, so any, you know, so. I'm looking to, as I've said, we've got a lot hitting our citizens for us. They're paying 25% more for their groceries. They're looking at putting a school bond of $580 million on the referendum. They're going to, looking at do a sales tax for roads and wanting to do a millage for the fire service. I'm telling you, and then wanting to raise our property taxes, five mils. I mean, we're really putting a lot of burden on people right now with this. And I'm not going to support all of it, I'm going to tell you.
You haven't even gotten to the fire.
We haven't got to the fire yet, and I'm like Mr. Marstella, I'm concerned about the millage increase.
These are the positions that we had added, but I'd recommend if we do go forward to the millage increase. And then the next one, Ms. Harris, here, I got it, let's see. So here's the side-by-side.
Especially when we're seeing the decrease in building permits and the revenue.
Yeah. And it's going to continue because interest rates is high and we're going to come up short again. I mean, it's just, and I've been watching projections for our economy, and it's not looking real good for the next year or two. I look at a lot of that and our economy is really unstable right now, and it could be for the next couple of years.
Which leads me to why I was asking for that comparison between the IT kind of budget items and the wages. So Mr. Marstella, as you're looking at this, would you rather pay your staff more or have those IT items? Because I think what I'm hearing from council is keeping it at no mils. And so we're going to have to make some tough decisions and figure out what we need to do. My vote would be to pay our staff more and reduce the other costs. Amen, I agree with that.
Yeah, I agree with our.
Just, just let me say, and I understand what everybody, where everybody's coming from because nobody wants a tax increase. But, you know, I do support the 2.5% increase for the, all employees across the board. I do, I do, but we also got to understand the growth in the county. And we're going to have to make some decisions. If we're going to continue to move forward, we can't stay still. And I think I say this every year. We got to understand we're going to have to pay more because we're growing more. And to, to work with what we've got this year for the next five years, it's not going to work. And, you know, whatever we do, I got to pay it too. So I'm not saying it, you know, I'm saying it because if we're going to move forward as a progressive county, we've got to look at our knees and we can't stay still. Because if we do, we just won't prosper.
So Ms. McGriff, are you suggesting that we continue to approve growth and tax our citizens for it?
No, I'm saying if we continue to grow, we're going to have to tax our citizens. There's no way around it.
We decide on that growth, we vote for it.
I did, I was, when that growth, all that growth that's happening, happened before I got here.
I'm just saying.
What, the growth in Atlanta?
Happened before I got here, before 2010.
That's not true, that is absolutely not true.
We can, we can go back. What I'm saying is, as a council, this has been approved, we control that growth. So we're responsible for that.
Jose, the growth is here now, regardless of who.
I think we need, we need to cut, we need to cut the budget.
The growth is here, we've got to deal with the growth. We can't work on a budget that we, every year you say, let's stay where we are. How are we going to grow? We can't stay in one position.
So I'm, I'm the one who got here the most recent, so I really haven't approved any of these. So my hands are clean.
Well, you know.
So what I'm, what I'm suggesting is, we take responsibility for the actions that have been taken by the council. I'm not saying any particular names, and that accountability is reducing the budget. I think our constituents should not have to pay for the growth. They should not have to pay for the decisions that council has made.
Jose, how we're going to cut and stay where we're at, tell me that.
I think we plan for it, I think we plan for more impact fees, I think we put concurrency standards, I think we control the growth until we have the infrastructure in place.
But in the meanwhile, how are we going to control the growth now?
We don't approve it.
And how are we going to meet our needs now?
We cut the budget.
Okay. I'm not going to say it, okay?
Well, one of the areas where we haven't talked about yet, we'll first show, so here's the side-by-side, and then Ms. Harris wants to talk about that, but if you zip to the external request, two pages, that'll give you some more discussion points. So there's, you have the side-by-side, 3.5, we'll do the stuff on the right, zero-milled stuff on the left. That's how the 3.5 would shake out across the entire general fund. But here's another area.
It's 47.
That Ms. Harris can speak to about our external requests.
Well, included in our external request, you'll see there's three columns here showing what the external agencies requested. Well, actually what their current level budget is for 2024, what they've requested for next year, and what is included in the administrators' recommended budget for next year. And so some of these things include association of councils, the Catala Regional Council. You'll see a justification for each of these things in the last column.
Recommended, let's see.
All right, so you have two, two slides of the detail associated with the external agency request. Included in these requests are also salary increase requests for the public defender's office as well as the solicitor's office. And so the requests that are included as part of the recommendation is 1.9 million.
And to highlight as part of that, one of those, the council on aging did ask for an increase. I am recommending less than they requested, but more than what they received in this current year. A $20,000 increase. But the bulk of that is our public defender and solicitor, as we consider as external agencies. And then to give you the full picture as we're wrapping up on this, Ms. Harris?
All right, so just to summarize all of the detail that we've looked at, and I know it's been a lot, but the balance, the budget is balanced with both scenarios. And so you have both to look at for consideration. Just looking and comparing budget to budget year, there's a three and a half million dollar increase in the general fund. So that's a little over a 4% increase over prior year. And that's, again, comparing it to the scenario with the millage increase. But we've included in these things prioritizing our staff with the 2.5% increase, the merit pay and Christmas supplement, the additional nine full-time positions as well as the select pay for certain positions and pay adjustment for some others.
One question here, one other thing I got here, and what is this merit pay? Christmas, Christmas supplement I agree with, we need to give our employees that. But the merit pay, that's something that we can not do this year. I, I just, I think we need to give all of our employees a raise and not, this merit stuff is an area that we could cut. And two, when we're talking about our directors, you're talking about catching those people up. I agree with that, we need to take care of the people we got. We, we got one person making $120,000 a year, doing a great job. And, and he leaves and we have to pay $150,000 to get somebody to do the same job. We, we just, we need to take care of who we got now and, and keep their salaries adjusted to where we think we can stay competitive in the market.
Here, here.
All right, we've seen this slide before, but it's just a, just a graphic view of our history of our millage. And here in the table format, we would, just here at the bottom, I'll focus you to the highlighted area which would represent what our millage would look like if we were to increase it by the three and a half mils in our operating budget, as well as the two-millage increase in our county capital fund. And so our estimated yield value for next year is the 518,000 and change. All right, so just to kind of give a snapshot of what it would look like for a household, you know, what the impact would be on their tax payment. If for a household with a property value of $300,000, an owner occupied, the assessed value would be $12,000. And so calculating that against the one mil, the impact would be a $12, $12 annual impact for their tax payment. And so you just have here a breakdown of some different, examples of different increases, but I'll focus on the $300,000 with a 4% owner occupied. If we just kind of follow that line across, we can show, and again, we did use up to a five mil in this calculation scenario, although we're requesting just a 3.5, so the impact would actually be less than what we're looking at. But if we follow that line across with the $300,000, we're looking at a monthly increase to the household of $5.50 or equivalent to a gallon of milk for owner occupied. And if we come down and look at the same for non-owner occupied, the $300,000 assessed value, that's equivalent to two gallons of gas.
Two gallons of gas right now is a lot more expensive than it used?
Right, right.
If I'm looking, if I'm looking at their tax bill, I'm going to have to multiply that monthly by 12, is that correct? So why don't you just give us that number, because that's what they're going to ask me.
We'll have that all for you next week.
This looks like a sales job to me.
Well, part of it is knowing it's up to five mils, so.
It's not going to be my sales job, I'm not going to support it.
All right, so I'll turn you back over to Jamie Purvis and actually walk you through some of the other funds.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. So now we're setting the general fund aside, and we're going to look at some of our minor funds. You see here, our minor funds are listed. We have the FY '24 adopted budget for each fund. We have the proposed budget for FY '25 listed by fund, and then a variance. I want to talk to you a little bit about, oop, these moved.
Want to go back?
That transportation committee, that dramatic drop there, that 1.4 is state funding that we expect to receive. So I want to point that out. Stormwater fund, we had some one-time roll-off purchases.
Go back to 56. So after all that capital improvement talk we just had, we're, we're talking about going down 385,000?
Yes, sir. Some, good, great question. Why that's going down is some things, you know, we purchase and then they roll off because they're one-time. And then our new purchases equal the 3.5 amount, and so we have a difference, so it will fluctuate. Because many times you have one-time purchases in that replacement fund.
Okay, how about, what's the 110 for the airport?
That is the position that we require, that is in the budget, that assistant position.
It wasn't in that list that we saw earlier, was it?
Yeah, there's two, upgrading the two positions, the airport.
Yeah.
Part of that factor is the upgrading the two positions.
So we need to get a list of these upgraded positions to know what they are. We'll get that by next meeting. A court mandated security, I think the county, association counties ought to be lobbying that, be paid for by the state, because they're the ones that required it, I believe.
Say that again.
I think the state has mandated additional security at the courthouses, yet they haven't funded it. Meaning, when, I think when the judge comes to town, he's got to have more security or individualized.
Are you talking people?
The state's not covering the cost, it should.
I'm just, but all I'm saying, we're, we're asking for a half a million dollars?
But that is because the court dated, court mandated security is its own standalone millage. It has been increasing as the mille increases. But that is to do, redo all the cameras and add cameras to the historic courthouse to be on the courthouse. So that is, that's staffing, that is some sheriff staffing at the security checkpoint and cameras and other things. So yeah, that's the specific increase for camera redo at the courthouse.
But I think the state required additional security. And that's just something we need to take up with association counties, we can't fight that battle tonight.
That's already, already been approved?
Approved. Yes, ma'am.
And when is it, when should it come into effect as of when?
Well, assume July 1.
Did you hear that, Dennis?
There's nothing for us to discuss tonight, but it's something that.
Well, you get that, Alan, make sure they don't pass it, okay?
Yeah, get rid of these unfunded mandates.
This transportation committee, this 17 million, almost 18 million, where does that difference of that going to come?
That's a decrease in the C fund, what, we've gotten a lot of state extra money over the last time. Oh, it went the other way. And now to take on one more big topic, thank you for digesting all of this. We got one more big topic for you.
Can we talk about a 10-minute break?
No.
You're the chairman.
10-minute break.
Hold it.
We are.
When we can start. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Snowden here and go right ahead.
All right, thank you. I think we're nearing the bend. This is going to be one of your last topics, and don't take it easy on me. I've got a ballistic vest under this suit, so. A bulletproof vest under the suit, so. So I'm going to take it back old school. Back in 1998, you all had the Askin Study that recommended, among other things, two career firefighters each year for council to do that. Not sure how many of y'all were around then. And then in 2003, the National Volunteer Fire Council projected that moving from a primarily volunteer service to a career service would cost an estimated $42 million a year. And then, of course, we had the Fitch Study, which looked at data from 2016, 2017, and again, recommended two career firefighters a year. And then with our theme this year of moving forward and making strides, we have been making strides right now. We currently have 13 rotating career firefighters. The council was in support of consolidating, implementing the new consolidated, Indianland Consolidated, Indianland Consolidated Fire District. And also, one of the things that our director player pointed out was our program with the high school, the Career Center Program. That's a two-year program that pulls students from AJ, Buford, Lancaster, and Indianland, the high schools. It's been a big tremendous help in supplementing our volunteers as we pay for the turnout here for our young folks that then go on, many of them go on to have careers as firefighters. And among the things, in speaking with other communities that are grappling, we are blessed that we actually have our volunteers and the commission, as well as our administrator that's very supportive, and career folks to move the ball forward. So everyone, by and large, is communicating and working together. And again, I want to commend Director Player and his staff for their input in this plan. The Fire Commission, certainly the Moving Forward Committee that looked at apparatus and recommended timeframes, as well as Chief Nichols and Chief Miller. They've been invaluable. And so we are advancing and we are evolving continuously. And among the things that I would like for you all to keep in mind is that this plan is just dynamic. You all asked to look at things in total, and as best we can, we have made estimates. They may not have all of the future escalations, but it's a starting place that will evolve. But we're trying to embrace more of a holistic approach and give you some information so we can keep making strides and moving forwards. So among the things we want to look at is our calls for service. And so if you will look at the data, since 2019, we've had an increase, and this is countywide, of 11.3% since 2019. But to keep it in perspective, if we look back to 2015, we have seen a 53.4% increase in our calls for service, for fire service. Here's a representation of our countywide heat map. On the left is 2019, and on the right, 2023.
What changed between those two time periods to cause that increase? What changed between those two maps in that time period to cause that increase?
I'm sure it is actually the, just the sheer numbers of people that have moved in, but I do have a few experts behind me that might be able to answer that. I know that it. It's the growth.
What was that? Growth?
All those resignings you voted for, Charlie.
It's growth-driven. All right, and then here's a representation of Indianland 2019 versus 2023. So just looking at Indianland, if you look from 2019, you compare 2019 with 2023, and Indianland, if you compare 2019 numbers with 2023, they saw a 58% increase from 2019 to 2023. And then, I'm sorry? 48% increase, yes, sir. And then Pleasant Valley, similarly, if you look at 2019 in comparison with 2023, there's a 30.8% increase in the call volume in 2023 versus 2019.
And I'm sorry.
That was interesting.
Just when I'm going through the maps again on page 61 that shows the growth in Indianland, just to see those hotspots, is that, I'm trying to figure out what those are. Is that 160, where that big one on the right is where it starts? Is that the commercial development that's over there?
Mr. Player, can you?
Roughly, it looks like Redstone, is that?
Yeah.
The lower one would be in the Sun City area.
Yep.
The bigger one at the top would be in the Redstone area.
Okay, so that's what I was saying. So it looks like it's Sun City, Treetops, and then the Redstone commercial development and the Walmart and all that whole.
Yes, the other one up there is that growth in the 165.
Okay. So all the commercial activity plus all the new developments, in particular, the active 55-plus communities?
That doesn't count for the EMS response and fire.
Yep.
But it's also all the multifamily dwellers that they're building. That's a lot of people in one concentrated area, so that probably rises.
So commercial, multifamily, and then active adult.
But at some point in time, there was an agreement that calls would be, what do y'all call them, lift assist calls? When did that occur? As we look at the numbers.
Come forward, if you would, please, Chief Miller or Mr. Player. Behind you, Ms. Snowden.
Call volume, Billy.
Ms. Snowden.
That's a lot of calls. I don't remember that many structure fires. So what is it? And one thing that they've told us is that it was a, they took over doing lift assists and things like that for EMS. So how many of this actually lift assist type calls versus real work that the fire service?
I think they got some data on that. I've seen some data on that.
Good afternoon, council. So we just started lift assist calls about two weeks ago.
Okay.
That's when it went live, yes, sir.
Yeah, but you got, I haven't got a memory going to some meetings, and you showed that, but you know, you get responses to, how many responses are these calls are actual fires? I guess that's what we need to.
Let's break this down a little bit. This is a dynamic overshot of everything here as far as Indianland and Pleasant Valley. So a lot of these numbers are captured before we merged. So with the Indianland side, we were doing a lot of service calls in Sun City, smoke detector changes, battery replacement, home safety checks, that type of stuff. And then Pleasant Valley had a lot of commercial, which Chief Nichols can speak on the Pleasant Valley side. That was before we merged. So that's the differences in the call volumes that you see from 19 to 23, which is where we actually merged. Both of those districts have fundamentally different operational in what we do. So, and that's why I encourage you, come up, take a look at it, ride the two different districts, and you can understand what I'm trying to explain to you. It's very different in each district.
Yeah.
Each station does completely different things, even though we still do fire. To answer your question, as far as structure fires, I can get you the number on actual.
Yeah, I want to say there were like 5% of the calls at one.
I don't want to put a number out.
Yeah, I know, but that's just what I, I'm not saying you put that in. That's the number. When I looked at the data, that was the number I remember seeing.
It wasn't a liar. Right, so there's a lot of other calls there, too. So you have a lot of rescue calls, you have a lot of motor vehicle accidents. And then, of course, when the promenade was built, a lot of those call volumes started to pick up. And then you had the Sun City portion that's in there, then the multifamily dwellings come in, and then, of course, Pleasant Valley started picking up, and then that's where Chief can take off on that, so.
Yeah, the structure, actual structure fires is probably in the 5% to 7% range. With the, I keep throwing commercial out there, but the commercial and residential and the multifamily, a lot of fire alarms. And then as you put all those people in a concentrated area, that's two cars per, usually household. So our rec is increased.
But again, I'm going to ask you all again, I want to see broken-out numbers for the types of calls that you do.
They got that information, I've seen it.
Well, I'm sure they do, but I don't, Terry.
I know.
I know you sent it, but I don't have it.
I believe Mr. Marsdahl can provide that information to you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
All right, thank you. We'll have those next week.
Let me, if you will, give me just one second. Let me address what we're trying to accomplish with the lift assist. Most of those folks are older people who are down, doesn't mean they've fallen. They're not injured. If we use, what we were doing was tying up an ambulance to respond. These guys were still going. We're not doing it in the rest of the county yet, but we actually have looked at trying to do it, particularly during the daytime. Because what it does is we're limited in our. during the daytime. Because what it does is, we're limited in our EMS resources, because on any given day, at any given time, every truck in this, in this county is tied up, and we're calling Union County for assistance, we're calling Great Falls for assistance, we're calling Kershaw County for assistance, and we're calling York County for assistance. So our citizens don't really understand, first off, why some other counties' ambulance is coming to pick them up. So we decided, along with Clay, because he was very much in the middle of all this to start with, because he's looking for a solution, to be able to not tie up those paramedics in that ambulance that's carrying people back and forth to the hospital, which a lot of times, they're getting stranded there because the hospital doesn't put them inside quickly. Takes them a while to get through the emergency room. Depending on where they go to, to Waxahau, most everybody has to come here to Lancaster by their medical control, unless they can get permission to take them out of county. So we're trying to help free up the EMS asset with the firefighters who are very close to the call most of the time already, go and help that person get up. All they need is just assistance to get up out of the floor and get in a chair and go. And, and we felt like it was a much more efficient use of resources if we could send the firefighters to do that. Now, if the firefighter gets there, and there's any question about whether this person fell, if they got any injury, we still call for the ambulance. But in a lot of these cases, they can help that person get up, they've kept their dignity as the citizen in the county, all they needed was something to help them get up, and, and that firefighter was there to do that. And they're on their way, and, and the citizen is happy. We, we've not had a single complaint yet, and I think I've only heard one call where we had to have EMS come in. So that was to try to be more efficient with the resources that we have already in place, to keep from tying up that resource that we've got that's limited, that, that the call for service is tremendously increased for in the county.
Yeah, no, no comment on how that, the EMS gets paid, we get reimbursed for the EMS call, but we don't get reimbursed for the fire-
Do not get reimbursed for the firefighter call. Now, I, I don't know how we bill for a call where they don't transport. I don't know if you actually are billing that person who'd have no medical need, they just needed to be picked up out of the floor.
Yeah, I understand.
I, I, you'll have to ask EMS.
I think you have to transport and be able to get paid.
No, I think they, if they treat on scene, and then the person stays at home, I think there is a charge, but I believe they have to actually treat. It's not just to pick up out of the floor.
Yeah. You know, I appreciate all that information, but last time we talked about this, I asked for data.
Well, we did just go live with the pickup. Now, can I tell you that the firefighters haven't helped EMS pick somebody up? Because we get called to the medical first responder call right along with EMS, yes, we probably have. But what we're trying to do is not have two resources there, just have the one. But we've only been doing that at about two weeks, I think, in that-
Yeah. See, y'all, y'all do understand, I'm not fussing at y'all. Obviously, if you turn the information into the administrator and he hadn't given it to us, then there's where our problem lies.
Yeah, I'd like to see that data also, because the data I saw was two, three years old. No, I'm talking about the calls, what the calls are for.
We'll provide that to you all. We'll email it out and have the information from, in time before next one.
Thank you, Ms. Snowden.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you all. All right, so our fire service overview, we have approximately two hundred and fifty volunteers, fifty-two full-time career firefighters, fifty-seven part-time career firefighters, seventeen fire volunteer districts, twelve, two career fire districts, nineteen council-appointed fire commissioners, three county-owned facilities, Harrisburg Road, Six Mile Creek Road, Possum Hollow Road, and fourteen fire district-owned facilities. Here's a look at the countywide fire districts, and do note the two new Indian Land breakdown. So here are just a couple of milestones. The Indian Land Consolidated Fire District in FY twenty-four, proactive adjustment of the rooftop fee to address the ongoing suburbanization of the fire district, three towers purchased, two for Indian Land and one for Lancaster, the use of ARPA funds for premium firefighter pay, and two replacement vehicles at four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, staffing addition of two firefighter, firefighters, and substantial pay adjustments, as well as an investment in a new mobile command fire emergency management law enforcement EMS and coroner unit. All right, if you will now, please look back at your, the supplement. There is, it's the very last page. And it's actually going to have this spreadsheet broken down that breaks down a ten-year or multi-year fire plan. And you, do you, have you found it? It's, it's the very last sheet.
Right here, the last-
Your last page, Billy.
The folded sheet.
Yeah, just open it up. There you go.
And we are going to walk through it, not necessarily the entire sheet, but if you have questions. But I, what I wanted you to see, and again, this is not perfect. We're just working through, showing you what a proposed ten-year or five-year plan could look like, looking at stations, apparatus, staffing, and operating. And Mr. Player has had input, as well as Chief Miller and Chief Nichols. And so again, this is just a working plan.
And highlight the Fire Commission's Moving Forward Committee.
And the Fire Commission's Moving Forward Committee. A lot of the, the priority years, their specific apparatus is there. So again, this just gives you a starting, a starting point. But I am going to break things down. If you look at the, if you look at the PowerPoint, the screen, you can initially, you can see things broken down. So we have the stations. And in this multi-year plan, as you can see in FY twenty-five, new Indian Land Station Number Two, as well as renovation to Indian Land Stations One and Two, as well as improvements to Heath Springs Station. And then in FY thirty, we have a new regional station, which would be the first of, of I believe, four. And so again, this is just, this is a proposal that you can certainly change, but just letting you see that as a team, our fire service team, the commission, as well as administration, trying to actually look ahead and give you some numbers. So then, when you look at apparatus-
I'm, I'm sorry. So as we're looking at this plan-
Right.
Is this taking into account developments that have not been built yet? So kind of looking at a pipeline and kind of saying, okay, so if this development is just permitted, if this development is under construction for horizontal development, if this development is under vertical construction, like just kind of gauging the additional impacts that we're going to have with growth?
It's taken into account a little bit of both. Clearly, the Indian Land Station does that, because you see what's coming up Harrisburg Road. But particularly the Heath Springs, the Fire Commission has been very strong. They need staffing support in that area of the county. And so they're very interested. So this is doing both, addressing-
So it is including future growth?
Yeah, but I, yes. So I will say, you look at calls for service, clearly, Indian Land, we just saw that. But even the Heath Springs, they're saying they don't have the volunteer response that they want. So they want full-time staffing at a station, which is the Heath Springs Station, to serve that area of the county. So that is addressing specific staffing requests from the Fire Commission, and then the growth that Indian Land has been projecting and forecasting for the last couple of years. And then the regional station on there, that, actually, that one is not fully determined the location, but that one will be based upon where the need is, but we want to account for it in this plan.
Yeah, well, what about the growth at Edgewater? I mean, that's eight thousand houses.
River Chase is growing, too.
And River Ch- River Chase has one there. They're going to ask me questions about that fire station.
Roslin's going to be an active adult community, which we just saw has increased demands.
Yeah, not necessarily from fire, from all the ones, EMS and-
Yeah, exactly.
And, and these are, again, just recommendations, but we're just trying to actually give a holistic look. And it will be up to you all to kind of determine where a new regional station or the four in the future. But this is just beginning of really trying to actually, again, look at things holistically. So then we move, when we move to apparatus, again, the Moving Forward Committee from the Fire Commission actually made these recommendations, the ones that are on your sheet, not on the screen. On the screen, I just kind of kept it very generic, but these are true to the priority years that they would like to actually see this. And again, I know it's a lot to digest, and, and we'll, we'll take any questions you have. So then, looking at staffing, again, what we looked at was what would be needed for multi-year staffing. So fourteen new positions for the Indian Land Tower. I know that the chiefs have kind of looked at trying to scale that back, but this would be ideal, as well as in FY twenty-six, twelve new positions for Indian Land Tower, too. We would also need staffing for Heath Springs. And so we know that we would look at nine new positions and five positions from, from existing countywide staff. And then, again, in FY thirty-one, if the facility is constructed in FY thirty, we would need to be looking at staffing. And we took into consideration what that would be.
And I'm sorry, just asking another clarifying question. So if we're looking at these numbers, are we including kind of inflation, CPI, or should we assume that these have a three to five percent kind of growth year over year?
And I'm glad that you asked that. We have not done that. This is just straight-
Today's numbers.
Salary benefits. We know that there's going to be really ongoing escalating costs, but we just had to start somewhere.
Yeah. So it's just based on today's numbers, and then we can make adjustments how we-
Yes. Exactly.
I'd like to know, I think Fort Lawn's building a big new fire department. I'd like to know how much they spend on the fire department.
Fort Lawn? Okay, we can definitely research that. And then, operations, and this would include maintenance, apparatus repairs. This would not include staffing, communications, training and travel, reoccurring expenses, insurance, utility, water, gas. And so this just gives you an idea. We estimated approximately two million per station, and then there were some escalations built in with the first of, of several regional stations. But again, we haven't dug deeply into looking at all the reoccurring costs and escalations until we kind of get an idea of what your appetite is to moving forward. But you asked for, rather than having hodgepodge stuff thrown at you, you've asked for, for a comprehensive look. It's not perfect, but it's kind of like, it's, I don't want to say-
Map, it's a roadmap.
It's a roadmap. We need a map.
It's better than what we had.
Yes, we need to get there. So-
And then, I'm sorry, just to, I'm on a rain delay. So for the Fort Lawn question, it'd be great if we could have a distinction between the acquisition costs for the land, the horizontal land development costs, and then the sticks and bricks, vertical construction costs.
Okay, all right. So now, hold on to your hats. So this is what doing those things will do over the course of-
Are we on stuff?
I'm sorry, you're on page seventy-two. So looking at what the administrator is recommending is a countywide fire millage for capital expenses. This would be stations and apparatus. It includes a ten-year, forty-five million dollar plan, and this would be nine mills, which would generate approximately four point six million dollars. And the assumption is that there would be municipal participation. So that means that we would be working with the, our municipalities to actually get them on, on board. And so, any questions or-
What happens with the fire fees that are in Indian Land now?
Which is the next slide, but this is solely for capital. This is not for operating. So right now, the fire fees are covering operating. There is a million dollars that the fire fee is paying on, million, no, a hundred thousand, I'm sorry, to pay off the Pleasant Valley. So they are paying a little bit of the capital in the Indian Land fee, but this is totally separate and apart. If you want to have Indian Land fund Indian Land Station Three, you would have to change the rooftop fee significantly.
So that, four point six-
Million per year.
Is that at the present mill value?
Yes.
That is for the FY twenty-five.
All right, on the tax bill, is that going to show up separate as a fire millage?
Yes.
So what is required for that countywide millage? Do we need to consolidate districts? Do we need to do anything like that?
Nope. It's, the language will say it's one unified district-county-wide. Municipalities would have to opt in. So we'd have to have those conversations, but it'd be to their benefit that they would then benefit from the new vehicles and different things as well. So I think there's motivation for them to opt in. But no, it'd be, the county would be listed as one fire district for capital purposes, and the millage would apply countywide, district-wide.
So this is just capital, which includes buildings?
Stations and apparatus. So this will help buy, build the upgrade to Heath Springs, new Indian Land Three, and a regional station valued at today's dollars around ten million. And it will get us, is it seventeen apparatus or twenty-one apparatus? Seventeen apparatus.
Does that take, will it cover the, the way we're replacing fire trucks?
This would be replacements of the fire trucks.
It would cover that expense.
It would cover that expense. So as you saw earlier in the year, we gave you a list of, I mean, ultimately, I believe the fire service would like to replace at least twenty-four within the next two years. That's not feasible financially. And they would love to have all these replacement, we have some that are twenty-five years old. We know parts will become a problem in a couple of years. We know it takes four years to order and get some fire apparatus. So you'll see this is kind of front-loaded, so to speak. But if you have the millage implemented, then it becomes a rolling program in the out years. But we're just addressing today's needs and requests from the Fire Commission, particularly with the apparatus.
Could we have next week a breakdown, like the school bond, you know, it's going to cost four dollars sixty-seven cents per month? What nine mills are, are, will cost per hundred thousand dollars in a four percent assessment, a six percent assessment, and a ten and a half percent assessment? Because I'd like to know what the impact it actually has. And just, you, you know, you do it on a hundred thousand dollars. We don't need a, you know, we can, we can figure it from there.
Because I think I just did the math.
At the one mill is twelve dollars, is that?
Well, I, I did it based, the average house price in Indian, I was looking for Indian Land, it's about six hundred and fifty thousand, I would guess. And that comes out to about twenty-six dollars per mill, based off of the same formula.
Oh, I got you.
Which is about two value meals per month.
All right.
No, I was just, I mean, it's still two hundred and thirty-four dollars a year, which is significant when you then add the additional five mills, plus the school board, plus then the one percent sales tax. It's a lot.
All right. Comments?
Our volunteers is not happy with this program, I can promise you. My phone has rung and rung and rung, and I've talked to a lot of them. We're going to destroy the volunteers. You, you can just, well, where you've seen that two hundred and something, you just let a strike come out, because it's going to destroy it.
The initial, the initial presentation, I think, that we made to the volunteers, they were not happy because there were some apparatus that were, that were pushed out.
They're not happy with the program, period.
That ain't a conversation we have-
Oh, okay. Well, I'm sorry. I thought it was just-
With the fire departments.
Well, we're definitely trying to make sure that we put them first, and that we, what I mean is, put them first in that we respect what they've done. And try, but the thing is, is that with our growth, just trying to put together some sort of, of plan.
Our fire department south of five wants help. They want us to hire more people, where they'll have more help coming to them. That's the biggest thing they want. They don't want to give up their fire departments. They don't want to, they, they want, just needing support is what they're needing. And, and they'll continue to be happy doing that. But when you start building a new station- But when you start building a new station up here and there, and using money there, and then, you know, it just gets into problems, and I promise you, I'm hearing a lot of it.
If we back up on your slides there, Ms. Snowden, if you'll go back to the, the stations, the stations, because I did meet with the Fire Commission last week, and.
I know, they told me, and I heard, I heard about a lot of bad comments about your presentation. Not your presentation was bad, they just didn't like what you said.
But based on that, I've changed. I mean, I took their information because, understanding what I heard, is they said they want more staff support, and they want it out of the Heath Springs Station. And so this very much mirrors what the Moving Forward Committee has asked for. And so I am in sync with them now. I agree with you in my presentation last week, that I did have it in different out years, but I've adjusted it because of their feedback and input and their year-long conversation. And so to address your concerns, what you all are hearing and what I heard, is that yes, if we make this investment in the Heath Springs Station this year, we can then work on the staffing plan to pull existing staffing to be ready to give them that support that they want, because they said they want full-time staffing support out of Heath Springs, and that's exactly what's in this plan, so.
Well, that ain't what I'm hearing. Everybody in the fire service is not at the Fire Commission. And, you know, and a lot of the fire departments are talking to me, to individuals, and they are not. They want people, maybe some of them stay at their station. They don't have nowhere for them to sleep, but they can do 12-hour shifts. They can come out here and put a couple around different places, and if they get a structured fire, they can go help another fire department, whatever. That's the kind of stuff they're looking for, not, not just, just to put a few in Heath Springs and them be happy, that's not all it's going to do.
There are other options for purchasing fire trucks. In the past, we have, we have bonded, bonded fire trucks out on like a seven-year cycle, and we are, we are three or four years past ordering trucks.
But if we just went on doing that cycle, you're talking 18 to 20 million because of the increase in fire truck cost.
You gotta have the fire trucks anyway. I mean, is there a better plan for fire truck replacement than the one that we've had in effect all these years?
No.
It's always worked good in the past.
We're now behind the eight ball because we haven't followed through with that plan.
But it does go back to, your other option is to use general obligation debt. And if I heard earlier your concern for raising the debt fund millage, because we've had, it's been going down, even if we do just for a few fire trucks, if we do 10 or 12 million, we can bond against millage of fire, or we take out the general obligation debt, but that will mean next year that the debt millage will go up.
Well, all you're doing is playing, yeah, all you're doing is playing games with it then.
That's right. That's what we did last year. Because the debt service went down, this, this council swallowed a little higher millage increase for the general fund. So now, all of a sudden, you've gotten that in your general operating, Dennis, and now you want more in your debt service, which offset the whole reason why. In other words, this is a compounding effect on the citizens of this county, and we've got to do a much better job of planning and figuring out the difference between operating and this debt service and this, these capital expenditures.
All right.
No, I think you're missing the point.
Go ahead, Ms. Snowden.
Okay. So to close out, I wanted to address Van Wyk. We are working with the Fee Board to balance their FY '25 requests with anticipated revenue. They are currently requesting one full-time position and a part-time position. So we will have more information next week.
Now, do they understand that, that if they want to go up in their current fee, and they wanted to go on this year's taxes, they got to do something before August, I believe?
Well, you have to adopt it as part of your budget.
Yeah, no, they're going, they're going to come, present it to the council, but they have to do that by August. Have you told them that?
We've spoken with them, and we're.
Have you told them our timeline?
I don't know if, if they have been given a timeline, but we'll make.
Well, they need to be given a timeline, and they need to understand it. I've had some conversations with some of them, and that they, they don't understand the timeline, that that has to be done by, and I know they're having discussions about the fee.
Okay. We'll make sure we close that loop. And then also, Indian Land Fire District also working with the Fee Board to balance their FY '25 requests. The initial request was for 16 positions, and they've since lowered that to six positions to staff the new tower trucks. So we are, we are in more discussions.
Do you have that slide up there, so you can show them the Indian Land slide?
Which?
Go, advance, advance, next slide.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah. We're talking about the position requests have evolved.
Okay.
So, yeah, so potentially, as the conversation goes, we'll have more information from the Fee Board if they are asking for a rooftop fee increase or not. We had talked last meeting about if you wanted to take the full rooftop fee and support it by millage. That didn't get much interest in going forward. And so looking at roughly, they're saying the $5 million annually to operate, if you want to get them to that amount, they're roughly at 4.2 now, it would roughly take, because last year, we talked about $175 rooftop fee was part of the conversation last year. They're saying that to generate 5.1, we verified, it would take about $180 rooftop fee.
With no millage?
No, there's no operating millage on the table right now. If I hear otherwise, let me know, but I've not heard. Everyone seems to be, okay, there's operating.
Don't go, don't go for the 11 million bucks for the station.
That's the capital millage.
That's 230, plus then the additional 30 for this. So we're at 260, give or take, give or take a Happy Meal.
If the millage gets passed for the countywide.
So if you advance that, next slide, any other fire?
So I was, so I was going to ask, sorry, Mr. Marsdell. So if we're looking at the FY '25 budget, we see, I'm looking at the 20 million yearly total, this would cover that. Does this, if I'm looking at the spreadsheet at the end of the supplement, does that mean the following year, we would then have, let's just call it a 2% millage increase, the following year is a 4% to cover the increases? So every year is an increase based off of the amount, the yearly total that would be required? Is it additional?
Yes. In terms of, so in this year's budget, part of the position requests, we are asking for two firefighters. So it depends on the staffing you do, whether at the Heath Springs Station or somewhere else, we're talking countywide. So the county millage will just cover the debt service. The operating depends on how many employees we pull from existing or new.
I'm, I'm just saying, based off of the spreadsheet at the end of the supplement, if we're looking at the yearly totals, I'm not worried about capital or operating, I'm just looking at the total. I'm just trying to figure out how much increase we would be asking the taxpayers for each one of those years. Let's say 2025 is the nine mills plus the $30 rooftop fee. Then FY '26, let's just say it's 2% about, it's probably about 1.75. The following year would then be about 3.5% just on these, and those are increases year over year.
Correct. I think those are good assumptions, because we're going to see, as we bring on more staffing, and if we start with the Heath Springs, like I said, we've added two firefighters last year, we had two firefighters this year, that is adding to the operating that is fully supported by general fund millage.
So, I guess, how can we start planning now to avoid having to tax our citizens and figuring out other solutions? Do we have impact fees? Like, what can we do? Because that's going to be significant compounding increase.
Impact fees are not going to cover. Are you talking countywide impact fees, or what are you talking about for impact fees?
Brian, I'm just asking for whatever options to avoid, I'm sorry, Mr. Carnes, for taking our, not to tax our citizens.
Well, we, I mean.
I'm, I'm just saying, let's put all options on the table. I'm just asking, Mr. Marsdell.
Impact fees can only be used for capital needs, it can't be used for operational needs.
No, I, but then I'm looking at FY '30 with the new regional fire station, that's going to be an additional $10 million, like, we should be planning now for that.
Let me ask something about, I want to make sure I'm right on this. All right, if the, the Indian Land Fire District, all right, the first year, if we do the, it would be a total of like 20 million to build a station and buy this other equipment. On top of that, we're looking at 15 million more for operating expenses. Is that correct?
I don't remember 15.
We're going from a $4 million budget to 19 million.
No, that, that is the Indian Land initial request, where they initially requested 16 positions, and the new station is wrapped in there, all in the Indian Land request. But like many things, there's different funding sources. So if you had funded the Indian Land request for the new station out of millage or general obligation bond.
So that millage would just be for that district there?
No, the millage.
There'd be another county on top of the nine mills?
No, no. So I'm just making sure you're keeping straight, the 19 million in their request for Indian Land, I don't know if that's what you're referring to, that's kind of their, all in their capital, but we're saying if you do the capital millage, that will come out of their request and be put into the capital millage budget. So their 19 million would be reduced by 11 or 10 million for the station, and then, but their staffing would be absorbed.
And they would close the station, too.
Yeah, yes, yes. That's their all-in, that's their all-in budget request, so we have to parse it out a little bit. And it also depends upon the number of new positions, which then depends upon the rooftop fee to support that and the corresponding operating.
Can we get a comparison of if we went with a millage and a small rooftop fee so that we could charge the rooftop fees? I think we've talked about this before.
Yeah.
And that way, the, you know, even if, you know, just based on what we're charging right now, what would that look like?
Yeah, but we also want to know, but, you know, we've got a problem with the fee and lose in Indian Land.
That's right. So if, if, if we kept a rooftop fee, then that allows us legally to charge a rooftop fee on the commercial. And you can keep the fee in place for fee and lose, based on what we're charging now for fee and lose.
So you would have a different rooftop fee for commercial and a different for residential, I assume.
Right.
Which I believe we said we cannot do by use type. You can't say only single family gets a rooftop and only commercial gets a millage.
We can reduce the square footage, though.
Yeah, you can, yes.
Thereby increasing it.
Exactly. So you have to go at it that way about how it's structured, but you can't separate out who gets what fee or millage. But also keep in mind, as we're talking about this new millage for capital, building an apparatus, we're locked into this for three years. This whole structure, you have to have a three, three-year look back to see what growth you can attribute. So we need to go in with this understanding that a nine mill just for capital will be nine mills for three years. So then, we do a three-year look back as part of the state law for this, and then we need to see if you want to adjust it, but it's basically locked in for three years. The, whatever millage, if you go forward to the millage for fire, capital, and apparatus, and stations, it's locked in basically for three years.
It's locked in, so there's no increase, but I thought Act 388 said you could increase it somewhat.
That's, you have to have a three-year history.
You have to three-year look back.
Raising it on it.
I'm learning all this stuff as I'm, in my last year.
Yeah, back to, we cannot distinguish one millage, rooftop, or another, so we'll have to look at square footage and ERUs and different things to get at that.
All right, reading the room, I need to go sit down.
So yes, and then the last slide, yep, Ms. Harris will take us away here.
So Ms. Harris is going to.
End up wrapping.
Take the rest, wrap us up, take us home.
So before, before she gets up, so when can we get the Excel copy of the budget?
Send you, oh, the electronic version.
The Excel, Excel version.
We should have that for you, we can get that to them.
Yeah, we can send that, there's a PDF version in your binder, but we can arrange to send an Excel copy.
This week?
Yes.
Because I, I thought we had said at the last meeting that I would have it for today's meeting, so I just.
Yeah, I think you did. You absolutely are right on that. Sorry, we're working on getting the books out, we'll get the electronic copy out.
Okay.
Also, I will just wrap us up. I think we have heard all the things we've looked at, you know, our budget summary, our revenue outlook, the priorities for next year, and giving you two scenarios to look at with a no millage increase compared to a millage increase. And so you have a lot of detail in your binder in front of you. We'll make sure you get the copies of the other things, as well as follow up on any questions that weren't addressed today. And prepare to come back this time next week to deliberate over all of this detail, and then move forward to our first, second, and third reading of the budget.
Is it going to be a shore meeting in this?
Well, I guess we'll see.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
All right, thank you.
Yes, 707, could I have a motion adjourned?
Motion adjourned.
[laughing]. I have a motion for Mr. Grab, second for Mr. Louise. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval. This workshop is adjourned.